Okay. Good evening. We're calling this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District's Board of Education back to order. Item 4.0, item 4.1, the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Superintendent Aguilar.
You please stand.
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Superintendent Aguilar. Item 4.2, our broadcast statement, which will be read by our student board member.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications at AT&amp;T U-verse September 7th at noon, and also upcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment either by submitting comments, which are posted on our website, or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public were also provided the opportunity to speak to the board during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting submitted a speaker form by noon today and were sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is not on the agenda, we will ask for you to please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda.
Thank you, Board Member Shake. Item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Now, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Behrens. Item 6.0, agenda adoption. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Student preferential vote?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, the motion carries. Item 7.0, special presentation. Item 7.1, opening of schools update. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, President Ryan. Well, first, let me just say, welcome back to this 2021 academic school year. We do happen to have a board meeting on the first day of this academic year, and so this presentation is even more timely than it has been in the past. I do want to thank again Dr. Casirier, who's joined us again, for your openness and willingness to continue to provide through our Board of Education, and I understand through other district Board of Education meetings, updates to our community. So I always feel like I want to log on at each of those venues where you're presenting, and I'm sure that other colleagues are doing the same, just to hear the latest update from you regarding health and safety and the many questions that our community has about providing in-person supports to our students, which is something that I know people are eager and anxious about and have a lot of questions. Otherwise, we're hoping that we are going to limit our conversation to what we think our parents and know that our parents are wondering about during this presentation. And with that, just want to thank our staff for all of the time and effort they've put into the presentation, President Ryan.
Thank you Superintendent Aguilar. We're going to go ahead and begin this presentation and discussion with the board.
Evening, Representative Ryan, Board members, and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris and the Chief of Continuous Improvement and Accountability of Sacramento City Unified School District. I think the superintendent has framed the presentation well. If we go to the next slide. And so ultimately, this will be a very focused presentation with significant time given for the Sacramento County Public Health Guidance, and then we'll talk with support for families as we start school, and then just a reminder of some of the next steps that are ongoing as we continue to build for the opening of the school year and sustain our plan for the rest of the school year. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Olivia Casirier, who is the Sacramento County Public Health Officer.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone, and thank you again Superintendent Aguilar and the members of the board for this invitation. So I'll try to make it brief because I know you probably have questions that you would like to ask. Just real quick, where are we at in Sacramento with COVID-19? We have, to date, over 18,000 cases that have been reported to us, and we have over 300 deaths. When you look at the cases, predominantly about 60% of those cases that we're getting are in the age group 18 to 49, so these are the young adults. This is the working population, which I guess is no surprise because these are the people who are most mobile in our community. They go to work, they go to different places. When you look at the deaths, though, it's a different story. About 75% of our deaths are in people over the age of 65. Then for those others, some of the chronic conditions such as high blood pressure, diabetes, kidney disease, lung disease, heart disease, are the predominant risk factors that are leading to these complications and deaths. Some good news is that over time, we have seen a reduction in the number of cases we're getting daily. There was a point where, at the peak, we actually got over 300 cases in one day, but that has gone down, and now we are seeing between 150 to 200 cases per day. So it's going down slowly. Good news, it's going in the right direction. We're seeing this also with our hospitalizations, where at one point, we got up to 280. Now it's down to about 130 hospitalized cases. So definitely some good signs that we're heading in the right direction as far as being able to bend the curve. So there are a couple of updates from the state. One is that last week, they unveiled a new system by which the counties are going to be monitored, as well as they will determine what kind of businesses are able to operate in our counties. It's a four-tiered system, and Sacramento County, along with about 37 other counties, is in tier one, which is the most restrictive. And as a result of that, many of our businesses still have to operate only outside, have only outside activities, except for hair salons and barber shops, and of course, some of the critical infrastructure businesses as well. As far as schools go, oh, actually, to finish off about the tier system, in order for us to be able to move to tier two, which is less restrictive, which would actually allow us to open schools for in-person learning, we would have to have our case rate go below 700,000 cases per day, and this is an average over seven days. It's a little different from what it, the way that they're looking at it from what it was before, but just to give you an idea, that we would have to see probably about 100 or less cases in order to be able to get to that tier. And now we're at maybe 150 or so, so we're getting there slowly. The other indicator that we have to look at is positivity of our lab results. So this is a factor that is dependent on how many tests are being done in the community, as well as how many positives. So right now, the threshold is 8%, and we are at 8.1. So I feel like we will be able to get past that one very quickly, but we need to have both of them below the threshold. One other thing that we've been asked about the tier system is the fact that when you look at, for example, the positivity, when you look at our dashboard, actually, we show a positivity of 5.6. So people have been wondering, why is there this discrepancy? Part of that is because the state pulls their data with a seven-day lag. So if we're looking at the data for today and looking at the 8.1, 8.1 actually is at least seven days old. And the reason for that is that they want to make sure that they have gotten all of their tests in because sometimes there is a delay with some test results being recorded. And so that's one reason. The other is the way that the data is pulled. And without boring you too much about the epidemiology, there's something called an episode date, which is dependent on when a person actually starts having symptoms. And there's also the lab date when the test is done, and they don't always coincide. So that also leads to some of the discrepancy that you're seeing. So moving on to schools, even with tier one, we are able to do the waiver process, even though we are not able to have in-person learning. But the state did release guidelines to, and for how to have the, to roll out the waiver process, and we did that about a week ago. We've received about 13 applications. Most of these are smaller schools or private schools. So we are going through those and hope to be able to respond to them shortly. And the other thing that the guidelines that the state released were guidelines for what they call cohorts. The main reason and for those cohorts is so that the schools can provide services for special needs children and children who need different types of assessments. I know that a lot of the schools have been asking about that, and so the state provided those guidelines. A few things about the cohorts. One is that it is not a loophole for being able to actually open up the entire school because there are restrictions, one being that you really need to look at student population that has those special needs. Two is the cohorts can only be 14 students with two adults. There cannot be any mixing of the cohorts, either the students or the teachers. So the one question I was asked is that could one teacher have one cohort in the morning and another cohort in the afternoon, according to the guidance that is not permitted? And the reason for that is that if there is a case in that one cohort, it is only that one cohort that will be impacted, that will have to go on quarantine. It would not impact the rest of the school. The other restriction is that only 25% of the school can participate in this cohort system. And also, it is not really meant for being able to give, to provide active instruction. It's mainly for being able to provide supervision, and that is why it does not need to be a teacher to, doesn't, the adult in the, for the cohort does not need to be a teacher. It could be anybody who is able to provide supervision. So I'm going to stop there and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Casirier. Superintendent Aguilar, are we going to proceed through the return-to-learn presentation before asking questions, or were we going to ask questions of Dr. Casirier at this time?
Yes. President Ryan, just in terms of being respectful of Dr. Casirier's time, I think it would be appropriate to ask her any questions, and then if we could hold off for questions after Dr. Casirier's portion.
Okay, thank you. I just want to remind everyone, we have 60 minutes in total for this presentation, so if you can limit your questions to two, I would appreciate that. If I can see a show of hands from board members who have questions for Dr. Casirier. Okay, Board Member Murawski.
Thank you, President Ryan, and welcome, welcome back, Dr. Casirier. It's always a pleasure to have you here, and I just want to state publicly as many times as I can that we just stand wholeheartedly behind our public health officer and our public health community in combating this virus. I know it's not always the same throughout the state, and it just needs to be, you know, you are our heroes in this time, so it just needs to be.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I did have, I guess, I guess sort of, sort of a comment and then a question. You know, in terms of what the state has put out and all of the kind of different options available, you know, I can't say that we do not appreciate the flexibility, but I think, and I, you know, we'll be talking about this more, and I think I sent you a copy of the resolution I'm bringing to the board later that gets into more of, more thoughts on this, but, you know, more than flexibility, I think for, to support our school reopening, we really just need to really tackle the virus and bring those cases down. You know, we are talking a lot about, you know, well, what can you do within this? Even though it's not really safe yet, or it's not, or even though we have a lot of cases still, we can do this, but it's not really saying that we should do this, or we're, you know, able to do it safely. So I just, you know, that's kind of my, my one comment. And I guess in a related kind of question, I just wonder how you'd describe the, the kind of strategy of Sac County Public Health and of the state? Maybe if, I don't know if you can speak for the state, but sort of, you know, there's different ways you can tackle a virus. And early on, we started talking about mitigation versus containment and figuring out, oh, we, you know, this thing's kind of getting out of control, we don't, we can't really contain it. Then we moved towards kind of mitigation, but I'm still kind of confused as to where we are now and whether are we, are we going to containment? Is that our strategy? Are we getting, are we getting there? Is there a kind of a, a date? Like, are we trying to like really bring it down, or are we just trying to kind of not overwhelm our hospitals or so forth?
I think, and thank you for those comments, all of the points you've, you've mentioned are important, and I just want to remind folks that it's not an either-or. Because even when we were doing our mitigation, we were still doing containment in terms of doing the contact investigation and contact tracing. The difference, though, is what, now that we are still seeing widespread infection within the community, it does make it much more difficult to be able to do the containment because the strategies that make containment most successful is being to, able to quickly identify people who are positive, make sure they're isolated, and then quickly identify their contacts, make sure that they are quarantined, and that's the way that you are able to slow the spread. But as it continued to spread in the community, we had to go to mitigation, which is more of a community strategy. And that's why at some point, we had the stay-at-home orders, and we know that they are successful because we were able to bend the curve, and we were able to get down to just having 10 cases per day, which was manageable, and we were basically actually back to just doing containment. And that's what allowed us to slowly start opening up. But I think, looking back, of course, we see that there are a couple of errors that were made. One was in not putting forth a strong enough message about the risks of gatherings, and also, of course, realizing that people were tired of being cooped up in their houses. So some people, and of course, because now we were giving out the message of, hey, we've bent the curve, folks had the impression that we, the worst was behind us. And I think one is that those gatherings, especially because they occurred around holidays, Mother's Day, Memorial Day, Father's Day, all of those are occasions where people from different households get together. And in addition to that, there were the graduations, so all of those opportunities where people were getting together, it, it was an opportunity for the virus to spread. And unfortunately, what happens in those situations is it gets to the point where it's not just the gatherings anymore, but now when you look at the cases we're getting, they're in all kinds of settings. And that's one of the things that I get asked about from the media is, where are you seeing the spread? And I'm like, it's everywhere. It's in all those settings, it's grocery stores, it's, you know, gatherings. So that makes it much more difficult, and it makes it more difficult with our mitigation measures also because we know that it's probably going to be very difficult to, for us to get back to shutting down everything. So what do you select to shut down and what do you allow to remain open? So those were all very tough decisions, and I do appreciate that the state was in a very difficult situation trying to figure out what was the best way moving forward. And if you recall, the old system we had for monitoring, it was either you were on the monitoring list, in which case you had all of these businesses shut down, or you were not on the monitoring list, and then you could have a whole variety of businesses open. So by going towards the tier system, that they're trying to do two things. One is being able to be more measured in what is allowed to open. And it's not just to auction, you're either on or you're off, but there are tiers, which takes into account the level of spread in the different counties. Of course, most of us are still in tier one. As I mentioned, there are 38 counties in tier one. But as counties are able to get off of that tier, it does allow them to start opening up a little bit more. The other thing also is that I think there were too many businesses that were open at the same time. And so a lot of people were beginning to move around. And of course, with also the unfortunate situation with the gatherings, this was another opportunity for a more spread of the virus. So again, with the tier system, they're trying to take care of it where it's more measured. There are only a few places that open at a time, and then you have to stay within a tier for a minimum of three weeks before you can move on. So that gives time to see what's going on, to take care of any spikes that might occur. The only ones that we're not able to control are the gatherings. And as you all know, we have another holiday coming up. So of course, all the of public health we're sent because we've been doing so well, but we're hoping that people will continue to remain vigilant and, and be careful because the only way that we're going to get to the point where we can have in-person learning, as you pointed out, is when the level of risk is low enough that we can keep everybody safe. One last comment I'll make, and I know my answer is kind of long, I apologize for that. But one other thing I want to point out, a question that we've been asked a lot, is when, from the research, it appears that children tend to get, even when they get COVID-19, tend to get mild disease. So why are we so concerned? And my answer to that is for two reasons. One, schools are considered a congregate setting. So we know that, that is, congregate settings do increase the risk for spread of infection. The other is that even though students may not, most of them may get just mild symptoms, but we have to think about our staff. Many of them have chronic conditions, as I mentioned. Many of the people that we're seeing in the hospitals and the deaths that we have are in people who have chronic conditions. About a third of our population has hypertension, a third has obesity. And diabetes, it's also a significant number. So we have to look out for all of our community. The other also is that the students go back to their families. Many of them live in multi-generational families, where you have people with chronic conditions as well as elderly people. So the only way that we're going to be able to protect the entire community and have a safe environment where our students can learn without having to have starts and stops is by having the, the risk of spread of disease low enough that we can have that stability.
Dr. Casirier, I think that's a nice transition to, to follow-up questions I have, and then I'll see if any other board members have questions. I appreciate how comprehensive and thorough you are in providing the public, our families, our concerned community members with a good understanding of where we are and where we need to be. My first question, related to what you just said around students' ability to overcome COVID if they contract it, is can you speak to the long-term health implications and the research that is being done around that? Because I think you made a very compelling case for, yes, they might, you know, be able to better weather it and not become as critically ill, but I know that there is evolving research around the potential long-term health implications of children who have contracted COVID.
Thank you for the question. Yes, there's still a lot we do not know about how COVID-19 affects the body. We know more about how it affects the adults, one, because we have tested them more. But because when the COVID-19, when the outbreak first started, we did close the schools, so that did protect the students. So we, we, one of the reasons we might be seeing fewer numbers of people in that age group, children, is because maybe they have not been as exposed to it because they've been at home. But now if we open up the schools, that there is that opportunity for exposure. We also know that there are some students who do get severe illness, even though it might be rare, but there is a syndrome where the body turns against itself, and some, some of the students can have very severe disease. They can end up with a lot of damage to their lungs and also some conditions where their immune system actually is not working appropriately. So it's, it's still a serious disease, and I think there's a lot that we still don't know. Some of the reports we're hearing is that even for people who seem to get mild disease, they might have damage to their lungs, and that will become more evident as time goes on. I know that there've been articles, even in our newspapers here locally, of young people who got COVID-19, ended up with severe lung disease, and there are some that ended up having to get a lung transplant. There are others who continue to have difficulty breathing, and that's something that we hear about a lot. There are others who have had clotting problems and ended up with losing a limb. So I think it is important for us to realize that there's a lot we still don't know, and that's part of the reason why we want to go slowly because I think it would be very unfortunate if we rush into this, open the schools, and then we have some of our children ending up with very severe disabilities or even death.
Thank you, Dr. Casirier. That was a sobering answer, but I think important that the public understands the reality of the evolving science. The other question I wanted to ask you very quickly was really around the data for 0 to 17-year-olds contracting COVID and how it compares today as opposed to where it was two weeks ago. So that should be a very quick question.
Sure, that, no, I don't have the number in front of me, but it is still increasing, and that's probably because of spread that we're seeing in households. It does not account for what will happen once we open schools, but I think people do need to realize that there is spread within the community and within the children as well.
Thank you, Dr. Casirier. Do we have other board member questions? Board Member Garcia?
Thank you, Dr. Casirier. Do we have other board member questions? Board Member Garcia.
Um, yes, Dr. Casirier, thank you for um, once again joining us and giving us um, an update. Um, I I wanted to thank you uh, for touching and elaborating on the waivers, um, for reopening certain schools to um, essentially that it's not a a simple process. There are a lot of considerations that need to be met and it's just not one not one factor, but multiple factors that need to be met. So it's not something that is um, I think um, generally as available as um, the average member of our community or parent may think it is. Um, and and so I I appreciate you um, informing us, um, and making us essentially learn more about what it it could potentially take. Um, but my question for you is um, about the capacity of the county in terms of testing, contact tracing and all that. I think um, last time you were here, um, or maybe uh, the time before, you were at a uh, it was a pretty tense point for the county in terms of having all the um, the availability of the um, of the tests, of the contact tra- tracing, building capacity, partnerships through the community-based organization. So just quickly, if you can give us um, just a a brief update as to what, how the county is able to um, better meet the needs of the of the community.
Yes, thank you. Um, we are in a better place than we were uh, the last time that I gave an up, an update. We have ten community-based sites that are available for uh, folks can uh, sign up and get tested there. We are actually um, so in, we're planning for September fourteenth to expand that so that we can make um, testing for school staff more readily available. One of the recommendations by the state is that schools should have uh, easy access for uh, teachers and staff that especially those that interact with um, the students to have ready access to surveillance testing. Um, uh, the minimum once every two months, it is a voluntary, but still something that would be available. So we are able to do that through a contract with a lab. Through our public health lab, we also will be uh, able to provide testing, say, so uh, suppose someone shows up sick and needs uh, COVID testing, or there is somebody who's positive and we need to test those in the cohort. We can do that more readily now through our public health lab and we've expanded uh, capacity there as well. So we're in a better place. We're also uh, working with the school contacts to be able to set up a system where we can work in partnership uh, to do the contact tracing and um, uh, I think it's going to go along really well. We have a uh, team that we're putting together at the county level that will be dedicated to the schools, so making sure that we're readily available to answer questions and to respond when is an exposure.
Thank you, Dr. Casirier. Um, do we have any other board member comments or questions? Doesn't look like it. Um, so I would just like to close, Dr. Casirier, in having you um, once again reiterate for the public any Labor Day guidance you have related to gatherings, since we have many families and community members listening right now.
Thank you so much uh, for that opportunity. Yes, I just want to ask everyone, I implore you, we've done well, we are going in the right direction. Um, I ask that um, at least for this year, that you limit any gatherings to only those within your household. Um, and for those that need to go out uh, for, in the public for one reason or another, to make sure that you use the face uh, face covering, uh, keep six feet distance and use your hand sanitizer. And for those who are sick, please stay away from others, um, because the only way we're going to get through this is by doing it together. So thank you again.
Thank you so much, Dr. Casirier. We're so grateful for your service.
Thank you.
Superintendent Aguilar. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you again, President Ryan, to Dr. Casirier, uh, just for your time and your uh, willingness and ongoing efforts uh, to partner with uh, school districts across the region. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll continue with the presentation, board members.
We can go to the next slide.
Okay, that looks like it's me. Uh, good evening, President Ryan, board members, Superintendent Aguilar. Uh, my name is Raul Bosio, uh, in-house counsel for the district. I'm going to give a brief overview of where we are in the negotiations process concerning uh, distance learning and the effects of of distance learning. Um, as you are all aware, we have now entered into uh, what's called the impasse phase of the of the process. And we'll give a little bit of an overview regarding uh, what that all is all about, what that means. So impasse is post-negotiation following initial proposals. If the parties are unable to reach an agreement, either party may declare an impasse, essentially a stalemate or a deadlock in bargaining. The parties are then referred by the Public Employment Relations Board, or PERB, uh, to mediation. And that's, that's where we are at the present time. Um, where uh, we've been certified by PERB to impasse. They certified uh, the parties yesterday. And the first mediation is scheduled for tomorrow, uh, Friday afternoon. So the parties will meet with the mediators that have been assigned by PERB tomorrow afternoon. Um, if after mediation, the mediator isn't able to effect a settlement and declares that fact-finding is appropriate, uh, either party may request that their differences be sent to the fact-finding panel. Next slide, please. At fact-finding, each party selects a member of the fact-finding panel and PERB selects the neutral third to serve as its, as its chair. Uh, the panel then meets with the parties about hearing investigations, et cetera. And if the parties cannot settle their dispute, the panel is required to make uh, findings of fact and recommended terms of settlement. And that concludes the process.
Thank you, Mr. Bosio. Superintendent Aguilar.
All right, now, President Ryan, we're just going to continue with the presentation, please, Mr. Harris.
And so you've seen this slide many times now, the vision statement that anchors our work. Um, tonight, I'll just simply make emphasis of the lower portion where we speak to this notion of all of our learning models will meet the needs of all students and mitigate learning loss. And so that remains the anchor point for all the district's work, um, all the preparations for today and all the work that will continue onward uh, from today. If we go to the next slide, please. And in the broadest sense, we have the Return Together Plan, which really orients around all of the key components uh, of the system and the season of distance learning. Uh, and again, the ones that are bordered are the ones that we've already publicly shared. And of course, we're working on all of the others uh, to release as well very soon. If we go to the next slide, we'll go deeper into now how the health, uh, public health guidance actually impacts the work of the system.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Victoria Flores. I serve as your Director of Student Support and Health Services. And this provides you a visualization of the data that Dr. Casirier was speaking of. So we are in the purple zone that you can see. We've got that twelve daily new cases per one hundred thousand residents. And the goal that we're trying to reach is seven. And of course, we're right there on that positivity rate at eight point one. I will say this data updates every week like Dr. Casirier was sharing. So next Monday, we'll be taking a new look and hopefully we will continue to see those numbers decrease. Um, we we, we then move into the red tier and we will have to be in that red tier. Oh, back to slide, sorry. We'll have to be in that red tier for two, solid two weeks before we can even begin to think about coming back physically uh, present in space. So I will just say Labor Day is really, really an important hallmark for our county that we stay indoors. It's going to be really incredibly hot. So we're hoping that we can stay indoors, stay with those that we live with and and hopefully celebrate in that way so that we can continue to see these numbers come down. So recent guidance was issued by our California Department of Public Health outlining the ways that even though we're in this purple zone and our schools are closed, ways that we can serve our students. So if we go to the next slide, I'll start to walk you through what that looks like. And again, Dr. Casirier spoke to this. But here's your visualization of what this looks like. So this is the elementary school waiver. It only applies to transitional kindergarten through sixth grade, even if your school serves other grades like a K eight. We can only look at those specific grades. And the application lists out very specific steps. The first one, we have to consult with our stakeholders, including our labor organizations and our parent organizations. And we have to provide evidence of those consultations and the outcomes. Second, we have to publicize our public health plan. And this one we've done. We've had our Return to Health Plan publicized since the beginning of August. We've already completed one full revision so that we're in line with the most recent guidance. And you can find it on our website, Return to Health. Please check it out. Uh, lastly, Sat County Public Health then reviews our application and reopening plan to make sure it meets these specific metrics. And they also look at that local community epidemiological data. That that data Dr. Casirier was talking about, about cases per day and positivity rate. And then they have to consult with the California Department of Public Health before they can make a determination. So there's quite a number of steps and and a whole significant process before we're we're even allowed to consider this. Next slide, please. Next, Dr. Casirier spoke about that small cohort or group guidance. So this applies to all grade levels. So that elementary waiver was just TK through six. This is all grade levels for very specific student groups. And the the California Department of Health, Public Health calls out students receiving special education or have a disability, students residing in foster care or experiencing homelessness, or students who just aren't engaging in distance learning. For whatever reason, there's some risk factors there. We may not exceed twenty-five percent of the total school's enrollment. So we're talking about a fairly limited number. And those cohorts that she talked about have to remain fixed and stable. You cannot have students or adults coming in and out. And they're capped, no more than fourteen students to two adults. The one exception is if a student receives a specialized support or service or assessment, we can meet with that student, you know, pull them out of that cohort, provide that support or service, and then have them go back. And then Dr. Casirier also talked about, we have to be doing testing. We have to offer um, voluntary surveillance testing for all of our staff um, who are working with our students. And that plan and that testing process will, we're expecting to roll out on September fourteenth. So Dr. Casirier is saying that they'll expand those hours at those ten sites and also have a special process for school staff to be able to enroll and get that testing right away. Next slide. And then lastly, the county, Sat County Public Health also issued some additional guidance because there's been lots of confusion about what's allowed and what's not. And so they did say athletic teams may start conditioning. However, no games are allowed right now and we have to follow all of that guidance. We know childcare has been happening ever since we closed and this pandemic hit. And childcare may be offered at school sites for um, people who, essential workers. So childcare for all of us essential workers who need to serve. And we, of course, having to follow all of that guidance. We know we can provide emergency mental health at counseling, one-on-one, when virtual isn't a possibility. Staff may be on campus to work, provided they're following all of those public health mitigation measures. So if they prefer to work from their office or their their classroom to do distance learning, we know we can provide assessments and supports in that one-to-one space, again, following all those public health measures. And then we can provide materials to our students, whether we're doing that in a drive-through or a walkthrough model, or even in reverse, taking the school to the family. Right? Some of our families that might not be able to get up to the school, so we can drop off and check in with our families. We just can't enter homes. And and that's another safe way that we can engage and connect with our families. And so Jennifer Kretschman is going to take you through that in that next slide.
Thank you, Victoria. So I'm going to give you a little update about how we've been doing with student and family engagement. Um, we're down to sixty-four students that still remain on our unreachable list. And hopefully, after we review today's engagement, tomorrow, we will find out that most of them have actually connected. And for the ones who have not, we will go out and we will find them. We'll be knocking on doors. We know connection is key, and so much of that relies on connectivity. So district-wide, we have issued over twenty-seven thousand Chromebooks, a hundred and fifty hotspots, and provided over two thousand Internet Essentials codes for six months of free Wi-Fi service to qualifying families. Once students are connected, we know that families need clear communication and expectations. Centrally, from the district, we sent over eight thousand welcome letters to families in all of our home languages. We also sent sixty thousand welcome back and fifty-nine thousand first-day-of-school text reminders to every single family in our district. In the Engagement and Attendance Office, our primary focus has been on serving and supporting our students and families. Customer service is vital in this confusing time. Customer service everywhere, at our sites, at the district, it's key. With the FACE team and our amazing communications department, we helped create our Distance Learning Start Here webpage and the Parent Toolkit. It's been a real asset in this time. Today was our first day of school and families and students needed us more than ever. We became tech support, emotional support, and just a friendly live person for parents who were struggling to navigate and figure out how to get their students connected to school. We did the best we could. It was a first day like none other. This morning, I got to sit with my ninth-grade daughter as she started her first day of high school at the Met. Yay Met! It reminded me how each and every one of the students in Sac City, they belong to all of us, and it's our responsibility to support and guide them through all of these important and meaningful milestones, no matter what's going on in the world. Thank you. Next slide.
And so as we think about, you know, engaging with our families and engaging with the community, we know that there's many things we still need to work on. And so this slide captures many of the feedback points that we've received in terms of access to technology, student schedules, supporting students with their work. Um, and we've used this as an opportunity to see the system and actually think about ways of addressing those concerns. Uh, if we go to the next slide. One of our front-end ways of addressing it has been through uh, Zoom sessions that our Family and Community Empowerment Department has sponsored. A couple of them have already uh, been completed with Zoom Guide for Parents, Parent Guide to Google Classroom. These are also available on-demand on the district website. So they're basically available twenty-four seven. Um, our FACE team is also looking at forming uh, other resources for parents. And so the emerging uh, webinars focus on Infinite Campus, what Ms. Kretschman just described in terms of the virtual binder and toolkit, and then also providing some support to families in terms of recognizing that this is a big change for our students, our staff, and of course, our families. And so FACE is committed to providing resources for that. If we go to the next slide. And so this slide is is not meant to be, you know, the the slide we have to take down all these nerves because these are actually all available like in our distance learning website. But what we wanted to highlight here is that we've created a a menu of resources around a number of key strategic topics. Um, I'll focus first uh, on the first bullet because we recognize that the relationship first and foremost for our families is at their school site. And so we definitely encourage our families to continue to engage uh, with their local school site, uh, because the teams are there, they're available, they're ready to assist. But as you look for other resources that we offer as a district, these lines, uh, phone lines uh, described here and numbers, and then obviously some of the supports here in terms of emails are meant to be additional resources as well, uh, both to support families and support, of course, staff. Um, the first one that I'll really make emphasis of is our main line, because there we've recognized that as we think about the the diversity of our system and and the needs of our families, we've taken the opportunity to update the main line. And so it is in um, our five major languages in terms of translation services. Those languages specifically include Chinese, Spanish, Mong, Vietnamese, and Russian. Um, and so in the context of support, uh, we definitely have taken time to to rethink how we use the main line as a resource for all families and engage. And then for other languages, we actually have another support line as well, which is referenced uh, for other families. And then, of course, you can see here, again, the portfolio of resources across the board uh, to support our families as they deal uh, with this new paradigm of learning that we're all learning together. The last bullet speaks to something that's really exciting for us. Uh, it's been the distant learning website. We've gotten very significant uh, positive feedback. Want to definitely take an opportunity to give a shout out to our webmaster, because as Ms. Kretschman described, that was taking lots of information and figuring out how to present it in a way that is user-friendly. And so our webmaster, Andrew Staris- And so our webmaster, Andrew Staris, basically took all that information and created a mosaic that we think is very accessible to families. And so far, we've gotten very positive feedback for it. If we go to the next slide. And so this is the landing page for our Distance Learning Support site. And you can see, you know, obviously vibrant in terms of the colors. But more importantly, the content is rigorous. We spent a lot of time benchmarking with other districts and actually benchmarking with our own departments to ensure that it has relevant information, actionable information for families and community, and making sure that it was very accessible. And the next series of slides, if we go to the next slide, basically just gives you a sense of what's available. And so this feature is on every page in terms of being able to have the ability to translate the page. And so you can see it on the graphic you see here to the far right. You can see the translation opportunities. And then, of course, the information available here is what we know our families need and value. If we go to the next slide. Then obviously, we know technical support is really key. So we provide a landing page to make sure that families can get whatever information they need, whether it be internet, student account information, and then, of course, Chromebook technical support. And then, again, as I mentioned previously, translation availability is on every page of this website. We go to the next page. The next slide, sorry. And then our Distance Learning tutorials, basically, again, providing support for the platforms that we're using, Google Classroom, Zoom. So making sure that we provide some level of support so that families have a resource as they work with their students to be onboarded and to be successful. And if we go to the next slide. And then as we spoke about, you know, supporting our families, really, the parent Distance Learning Toolkit is not just technical support, but it's also other resources that we've seen across the nation, you know, through National PTA, actually locally through Parent-Teacher Home Visit. We know that our families need more than just technical support, but they need supports just to maintain kind of their own ability to feel optimistic about being able to meet the challenges, not just obviously in the context of Distance Learning, but just this new way of doing education. And so with that, actually, the next slide, basically, if we go there real quick, just gives standard forms. And so, again, this is meant to be an overall resource to support families and to make sure it's one-stop. So as you have questions from constituents, as families have questions, we really recommend, I'm starting here with this website because all the numbers I shared are basically embedded in the website. And then this is the website of many, many resources that we're excited to share and we feel very confident it supports. If we continue on with the presentation with the next slide. And next, this slide just basically wraps us up in terms of all the next steps, speaks to all the work ahead, finalization of all the plans that we've made, obviously completing the negotiations process as our attorney took us through. And then continuing to look for additional resources because we know that in this ever-changing environment, there's always new emergent resources. And so we're going to continue updating all of our websites with the latest information possible. And then, of course, thinking through this notion of the appropriate time to return to blended classroom learning. And then finally, thinking through the system metrics that we know are going to really be important for our community and for our families to know how is the system performing. And so we're learning new metrics, thanks to Senate Bill 98 and other content experts about ways to measure the system in the context of distance learning. With that, I'll end there.
Thank you, Vincent. We have about 15 minutes for Q and A. So if we have board members who have a couple compelling questions, please raise your hand. And I'm sorry, right now, I don't have a screen view of everyone, so I'm doing my best with the slideshow up to be able to manage the board. So Board Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Ryan. I will keep it brief. I have a question in regard to the internet slide that you had up, Vincent. You don't have to find it. I can just ask the question to save time. I am wondering what we, if we're reaching out to families, especially in regard to families with multi-children households that may or may not be on the Internet Essentials program. And they may be on the Internet Essentials program, but not through our district-led efforts. And for making sure that all of these students are able to get onto the internet at the same time if they have more than one child in the home.
Thank you. There's been work directed, actually, by our Instructional Assistant Superintendents with Site Leadership to ask those questions. So it is on the radar.
And I'll also mention, Member Pritchett, that just a reminder that we have included a flag in our student information system through Infinite Campus so that we can verify student by student for the same reasons that you mentioned. And as we complete that effort, we will commit to coming back to the board with actual data disaggregated so that we can share with you how many of our students have internet access through our district-sponsored effort, as well as those that might have internet on their own and Chromebooks as well because we do want to make sure that we can tag and verify that connectivity is available. It is, at this time, because of this pandemic and distance learning, it really has become an educational and civil right to have access to the internet.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. So two questions since we're on, we're trying to stay on time. So the slide on the negotiations process and the mediations, thank you for walking us through that. I think it's important to understand what the process is. But just wondering what the timeline is. I think it's, and then figuring out, a related question would be, how would, what can parents expect in terms of next week, right? This week is different than what next week will look like. So what and when can we tell parents, when can they expect something from the district?
Thank you for the question, Member Garcia. I was going to also discuss it during my superintendent report, but I'll just mention that we have agreed to move on the mediation process. There will be a mediation session tomorrow at 4:00 PM through the State Mediation and Conciliation Service. There have been the appointments of two mediators who will be co-mediating. So we are very committed to making sure that we communicate with our families in some form tomorrow afternoon, early evening, depending on how that mediation session goes.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would just, you know, urge that the communication is simple so that, you know, our parents and community can clearly understand sort of what to expect next week. And then I also wanted to ask about some of the technical issues. I know that my daughters had a great experience in, you know, logging on for the first time as sixth graders. But I know that wasn't the case for everyone in our, in our district. So I'm just wondering if you can touch a little bit upon what happened.
Yeah, thank you, Member Garcia. Again, I think you, we're thinking alike. I was going to mention this in a few minutes as well during my report. But I do want to acknowledge, of course, that we had a technical glitch, one that caused a lot of anxiety to all of our impacted families. My own children, who are in elementary and in middle school, didn't experience it. But I know that it was experienced across the entire district. There was a glitch that was due to our expectation that our student information system, Infinite Campus, was going to communicate seamlessly with Google related to what is called master schedule. This is how we know which students are in which subject areas, in which classrooms, and what the classroom rosters are. And that didn't happen as planned.
Oh, I think someone is not on mute right now. If we have any of our speakers not currently on mute, if you can please go on mute.
So I, I do want to express my sincere appreciation to our teachers and our principals and staff who immediately got to it, communicated to our families. But I do recognize the anxiety that was caused by that lack of of seamless communication between these databases. I'm very appreciative, and we hope that that we will get to now focus on student learning. So you're right, it didn't occur across the entire district. But but I certainly can understand the anxiety that it provoked. And we will continue to make refinements and improvements so that we can quickly get into making sure that our students are learning and are spending time with their teachers and their classmates.
Thank you. Do we have other board member comments and questions? We have question from student board member Shayk and then Board Member Murawski.
I just have a quick question regarding the website. I'm seeing a lot of stuff supporting distance learning as we go on. But starting off the year, I don't think I saw Chromebook request forms or some of the details towards our internet. Are those on the Distance Learning website?
Yes, they are.
Cool. I just hadn't seen them. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could just reiterate, President Ryan, I think you mentioned it. Certainly, Mr. Harris did. I would continue just to encourage our parents to seek support from their individual school sites. Chromebooks are at individual school sites as well. So different than when we closed our buildings in March. We now have our schools that are in session. We have wonderful principals leading each of our school sites. And so there isn't a need to try to navigate through the district how to be able to access a Chromebook, for example, student board member Shayk, or to access a Chrome, internet access as well. I would just encourage our community to reach out to their individual school sites where I know that our principals are eager to provide those supports.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Board Member Murawski.
Thank you, President Ryan. I'm not sure exactly who this is, who this is for, but I am wondering, you know, a lot of questions about, you know, the first day of school, starting kind of who logged in, who's, who's here? How many do we expect? I read some, something about LAUSD that the kindergarten enrollment was very much down. I imagine that's similar here. I know anecdotally that that has been happening, that folks are maybe holding their kindergarteners back. And so I wonder if you can give sort of an overview of what we know at this point about enrollment? And then also wondering about kind of staffing and just overall monitoring, like how is the board and the community going to remain informed about, you know, kind of how it's going?
That's a great question, Member Murawski. And I'll let Mr. Harris add to the following. We actually are in the implementation stages, if you will, of a dashboard related to distance learning as it relates to starting the academic school year. And attendance is, of course, a metric that we want to report on. And he can speak a little bit more to the other metrics that we are thinking of for, again, a distance learning dashboard for a new school year as opposed to what we had from March to the end of the school year several months ago. And then our Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Allen, is currently managing right now a cross-departmental effort as she's done so very well over the course of many years related to enrollment and monitoring some of the patterns that we might be seeing. I think that it is pretty safe to say that we too in SAC City are seeing some patterns at the very lower grade levels, including kindergarten. And we are monitoring this very, very closely. And I can ask Deputy Superintendent Allen to speak on sort of the process and what are some other things that that we are seeing related to enrollment? So if I can have Mr. Harris and then Ms. Allen speak very quickly to some of these issues.
Superintendent spoke to, I mean, you know, obviously, in the distance learning world, we're, and Senate Bill 98, we're basically looking at the metrics. Now, I don't have a report right at this moment in terms of attendance for today, but we are going to be looking at attendance. We'll be looking at participation rate. We'll be looking at student behaviors, suspension, some of the traditional metrics that we have. As Senate Bill 98 calls out, there is this notion of looking at significantly disengaged students, which is an attendance rate at 40% or below. And so we will be adapting our tools to match the callouts on attendance and participation engagement. These will come over time because we're still learning exactly how some of these metrics are framed. But I will say attendance will be one that we'll be able to report on on a very consistent basis, along with behaviors, along with suspension in the context of distance learning. And we have, in recognition that something like suspension changes in the distance learning context, we provide a different guidance to sites now in terms of looking at student behaviors and suspension going forward. In terms of other metrics, you know, we often have our district common assessments. So we'll be looking, once those are implemented and appropriately administered, we'll be looking to report on those. And then we'll also be looking at letter grades in lieu of the aspect for the short term, particularly focused on the percent of students who are scoring a C or above or a three or above in terms of being able to monitor academic performance. So that's the first kind of short blurb. But there's definitely more to come. And definitely, today, we start the launch of those official metrics.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do we have other board member questions or comments?
I'm sorry, I think Ms. Allen was going to answer a question.
Just to add to that quickly, I will say that we, we meet regularly every week with the Assistant, Instructional Assistant Superintendents. And Superintendent is correct, we are currently about, under-enrolled from last year, around 900 students. A great majority of them are in the kindergarten grade. And so we are working very closely, the Assistant Superintendents are working very closely with the principals to reach out to parents and to locate where our kindergarteners are. And so that is a big push that we have been doing. So we will meet tomorrow, and we'll have more solid numbers since school has started. And school sites are also able to enroll at the site. Parents are able to bring their enrollments to, their enrollment packets to the enrollment center as well as to the sites. And so we're hoping, as we do what we call our warm body counts every, every day, that our numbers will go up, especially in our kindergarten grades.
Thank you so much, Deputy Superintendent Allen. Other board member questions? Hey, I want to take the opportunity to thank the staff, our extraordinary Serna Center educators, our administrators, the amazing teachers who across the district rose to the occasion and met the technical challenges head-on today. Obviously, these are uncharted territories. This is very difficult. And we have seen, having a late start date, other districts across the state struggle with road bumps along the launch of their distance learning. But we're determined to get this right. And I know that our families are anxious for a schedule, and we will be communicating with you and over-communicating with you in the coming hours and the next few days. But rest assured, when we return after the holidays, we will be there for your students. Superintendent Aguilar, I will take public comment on this item 7.1, if we have any.
We do have public comment. We have eight written comments. The first is from Lisa Moretti, and it says, "I am a parent of a kindergarten student at Leonardo da Vinci. I am outraged and frustrated at the lack of agreement between SETA and SAC Unified two days before school starts. I just attended our first class meeting, and our teacher has to admit that she doesn't know what the schedule will be for the start of school. It is embarrassing for the district to claim in a video that they are supporting students in virtual learning when the bare minimum of knowing the virtual teaching hours can't be communicated to parents. My husband and I are both working parents. We are fortunate to have flexible jobs, but that is not the case for all working parents. How do I tell my boss that I don't know next week what hours I need off to support my kindergartner? The district needs to trust and empower our teachers. Who knows better the amount of instruction a class needs but the person we trust our kids with every day? Give the teachers the flexibility to tailor their teaching to their students. Allow principals to ensure standards are being met and hold their teachers accountable. Please look out for our students and families in this stressful time. This is difficult for everyone. Don't make their This is difficult for everyone. Don't make their jobs harder." The next comment is from Nikki Malovski and says, "We are very concerned about student privacy and students' ability to participate in lessons that are recorded as the district's proposal requires. I would like to share with you what your own legal department says that recording lessons means for students. This is an excerpt from a document put out by your own internal legal counsel as the written statement that teachers should include in their class syllabus to students about recording. Quote, "Portions of our class sessions will be recorded for use by students in this class, including those who are unable to attend live. Students who participate with their camera engaged or utilize a profile image are consenting to have their video or image recorded. If you are unwilling to consent to have your profile or video image recorded, be sure to keep your camera off and do not use a profile image. Likewise, students who unmute during class and participate orally are consenting to have their voices recorded. If you are not willing to consent to have your voice recorded during class, you will need to keep your mute button activated and communicate exclusively using the chat feature, which allows students to type questions and comments live." First, this statement means that any student, even those under the age of 18, who participates in class with their video or image or even speaks in class are automatically consenting to be recorded. Second, this means that if a student or their family does not want to be recorded, the student can only participate in the live class lesson with their classmates by typing into the chat function. How isolating is that? How prohibitive and discriminatory? How is a first grader supposed to type all their communications into the chat? Teachers should not need to remind district leadership there are students that must not be recorded for legal and very confidential reasons that should not be drawn attention to every day in class." And the next comment we have is from Angie Sutherland and says, "I want to thank the CAC for organizing a special meeting last night where questions from parents were answered by Christine Vieda and Becky Bryant about distance learning. In terms of the district's return to Learn Plan, it is unfortunate that an agreement has not been reached with SETA on a plan that puts our students first. SCUSD wants to require that service logs be provided not less than weekly. SETA does not want to put a number on it. They want to meet later to figure out how to demonstrate compliance with IEPs. Nothing ever comes from, quote, 'let's meet later,' unquote. Consider the agreements to limit district-wide assessment, to halt the expansion of inclusive practices, and to stop the Spark Initiative. These were, quote, 'let's meet later,' unquote, agreements. Yet several years later, nothing has been resolved. Our students cannot wait any longer for equity. Synchronous and asynchronous minutes, how this is defined? SETA wants ambiguity in what is considered synchronous learning. SETA wants to cap instructional minutes for students with disabilities. Even it does not jive with their IEP. This is a huge violation. As special education instruction is determined in IEPs, not subject to bargaining. It is the law. This is not a bargaining issue. Also, SETA wants to limit the number of daily instructional minutes for students enrolled in a continuation high school. We cannot think of a reason to offer an hour less instruction per day to these students as a group. Is this discriminatory to cut these students' learning hours as a default? SETA strikes out language that unit members will check their district email and respond, quote, "within 24 hours," unquote, to parents. Parents should receive timely communications." The next public comment is from Tara Ronson and says, "We just experienced our first day of school during these unprecedented times. I'm grateful to my children's teachers and all the staff and families at our school for their preparation and flexibility, but we didn't have to experience this week of uncertainty. In July, parents, as the untrained and de facto teachers aides, shared our feedback for learning in 2020-21. Seven weeks ago, every school district in Sacramento County were told the school year would begin with 100% distance learning. I held out hope that our late start date would be an advantage and provide sufficient time for SUSD and SETA to come together and develop a plan to provide a robust distance learning plan. Instead, the years of mistrust and lack of collaboration among our decision-makers again is coming at a cost to the students of this district. I expect the bargaining teams to meet around the clock with the state-assigned mediator to get to a solution. Please find a way to work together. Once we have a distance learning plan, we need our decision-makers to address our budget deficit and avoid receivership. My children and all students in SUSD deserve the opportunity to receive an excellent education." And the next comment is from Jason Spann and says, "I support a plan whose intent is to get schools open next calendar year. Please keep in mind that a zero COVID infection is not likely possible, and I don't think needed. We need a plan that greatly reduces the risk of COVID spread, and that should be good enough to open schools. Let's think about the kids and the negative impacts associated with keeping them closed. It's likely that these school closures are more detrimental to our kids' health than COVID itself. The teachers' union needs to stop thinking of their self-interest and focus on the kids. Teachers can be safely protected in schools. There is a greater risk for parents, and I believe the majority of parents are willing to take this relatively low risk if the proper preventative measures are in place." And the next comment is from Guina Bird and says, "I have two issues I'd like to address. One, like most parents, I am dismayed that we are starting this school year without an agreement between the district and teachers about what distance learning will look like. This lack of agreement has caused unnecessary stress for everyone, especially students. SUSD is one of the last districts to start the school year across the country. That means there are thousands of examples across the country of schools opening using distance learning. Many of these schools have been open for weeks now. Why aren't we learning from those districts about what's working and what isn't? Why is SUSD reinventing the wheel on issues like the appropriate number of minutes of screen time and how to guard against privacy issues while on Zoom? We aren't unique in having these concerns, so why do we think we have to start from scratch and bargaining about them? The amount of time and money being spent to argue about these issues and still not come to agreement is shameful. Let's draw from other districts' successes and failures and make a plan. And two, please seriously augment the technology department. If the entire semester is going to be dependent on technology, let's make sure we have experts who are available to address problems that arise immediately. There should be 24/7 tech support for families and for teachers so that glitches don't get in the way of learning. Reliable, responsive tech support is essential to making sure distance learning is successful." And the next comment is from Sarah Kingsley and says, "My child started seventh grade today. He's only been on campus a few times and has never met his teachers or fellow students. He was anxious and unhappy leading up to today, all the more so because he didn't know what his schedule would look like for each day. This morning at 9:00 AM, his previously empty Google classroom populated with one teacher after another in real time. He joined their virtual classrooms and checked his assignments for Zoom instructions. We had one minor flip during first period that the teacher was able to sort out in real time. I want to commend and thank all of his teachers for using Zoom video conferencing to introduce themselves and let their students see them. It set his mind at ease and helped him feel comfortable. While this isn't what we expected his middle school transition to look like, seeing it in action has been a relief. I know there are families who do not have the same experience. I know inequities exist across our district, that some kids got back to school nights with their teachers well before the first day, that some students got piles of books and supplies while some are still waiting. I genuinely wish we had equity for all of our students and that each student's educational experience wasn't so dependent on the school or teacher they are assigned." And the last comment is from Renee Webster Hawkins and says, "The public debate over the number of instructional minutes is a red herring. As any parent with a disability knows, an IEP's promise of a certain number of minutes of special education services is meaningless unless there is a specific description of what the services will include. Negotiating over a number of minutes without defining the quality of those minutes is the distance learning equivalent of counting butts and seats. SETA has posted on its public page that a central point of contention in the negotiation impasse is that it wants the same professional judgment and freedom that teachers had prior to distance learning. Newsflash, the accountability that the district is building in the return to Learning Plan isn't just limited to the district's proposed distance learning plan. The articulation of essential standards and the method of monitoring students' progress is essential to the MTSS framework and other continuous improvement science that is critical to reverse the entrenched practices and opt-in culture that has resulted in inequitable and disproportionate outcomes for our vulnerable students in schools. For over a decade, the need for accountability now is the most important priority for the students in our district and should be considered non-negotiable for anyone who is committed to a high-quality public education for all students." And that was the final public comment.
President Ryan, you're still on mute.
Thank you very much. COVID Relief Dollars, which will be presented this evening by Rose Ramos.
Good evening, President Ryan, Board Member Superintendent. Tonight, if we could get that PowerPoint started, please. Thank you. So tonight, we'll be presenting to you our proposal for spending the federal COVID Relief Dollars over these next few months. Next slide, please. Next slide. Oh, thank you. Really quick, just to go over some background information, just to provide you just a little bit of a brief history on what we've been doing so far before we dive into the details. Just for everyone's clarification, the district has been working on a plan from the onset of COVID. Granted, it wasn't, you know, a plan that we could foresee or that, you know, we were going to plan for three months, two months, or six months because of the uncertainty of our environment, given this pandemic, and not knowing when we were going to see relief from that completely. But from the beginning, the district went immediately into mitigating mode. What do we need to do to continue education for students? What do we need to do to protect our staff, our work, and disinfect all of our school environment? And so immediately, we went into, as you all know, purchasing the tools that students needed to learn, which included Chromebooks, devices, software, access to Internet, et cetera. And then we also jumped on the purchasing road of personal protective equipment for our staff. And that had a couple of glitches only because we were not the only district in, you know, in purchasing these items, so there were some delays. But nonetheless, we were able to secure enough for all of our district and continue to do so. And then we also went into focusing on disinfecting all of our school sites and our facilities and district offices and all the purchasing that went along with that and maintaining that on a regular basis. And then, of course, we had to make sure that our staff that was working remotely had the tools that they needed in order to work remotely safely and securely. So all of this stuff was happening at the same time. And so we immediately just went into developing, what do we need to do to make sure that all these areas are covered? And what do we need to purchase? Unfortunately, at the state level, they released some funding right away upfront and allowed us to facilitate that. So that was kind of our first phase. And then after that, you know, we went into deciding what's going to happen over the next few months? What do we need to plan for? Not knowing what was going to happen, we assumed that we were going to start the school year back in regular session. And so we spent quite a bit of time planning for that and figuring out, how do we mitigate COVID spread? What do we need to put in place in terms of barriers? So focused a lot on that. And of course, we know that that did not happen. So we have to be very flexible and adjust very, very quickly. And so all along, continuing to update our spending plan and revise it and make purchases as quickly as possible to make sure that, you know, we didn't miss a beat in any of these areas and kept operations and education going. So I just wanted to let, you know, everyone know that, you know, the district has been working very hard to make sure we were keeping pace with what was needed by students and by our staff. And then, so at the same time that we're doing this, of course, we have to keep in mind several considerations that, in addition to getting the state funding, we got several buckets of federal funding, for lack of a better word, over time. Lots of changes with some of those fundings. Of course, these are all one-time dollars, but there were some deadlines attached to each of these allocations. And some of them varied, and some of them have changed. Since the last time I reported to you, there was one small amount that did have a change in the spending date, which is a good thing. It extended it, but not, you know, not for the big pot. And I'll go into detail on that one. But so I just wanted to share that we had to, you know, make sure that we were planning to take that into consideration as we're spending. When are these resources going to expire? And then the other thing with federal funds, if you know, some of you may not be aware of this, we don't get that money upfront. We have to wait and get reimbursed. It's almost a reimbursement-like basis, or they, you know, release the funds several months later. So we had to make sure that we were managing that along with our cash flow because, you know, cash flow is very sensitive for the district. And so we couldn't just go out and spend $40 million without considering what kind of impact that was going to have on the district and making sure we were able to manage, you know, any kind of serious dip in our cash flow. So we had to, you know, that was a factor in there. And then the other thing, we need to make sure that we weren't going out and just stockpiling on, you know, a whole bunch of masks, that how long are we going to need these for? And was that a wise investment at this point? So we were constantly monitoring, do we have enough on stock? And then the replenishment. So those were some of the challenges that we were wrestling with. And then along with continuing to build the plan. So just a little bit of background information there. So tonight, what we're going to share with you is the next phase of purchasing, major purchases. And what we're aiming for here is, what are those things we need on our school campuses and throughout the district when our students return? So that they do return to an environment that still is mitigating COVID-19 and that it's still that, you know, our purchases coincide with spending deadlines. And then, at the same time, making sure that we leave enough for next year because we know some of these funds can carry forward for another year because we do not know what the six months that come ahead of us are going to look like in terms of our needs. So we certainly don't want to go out and spend and commit everything as well. So with that, let me get started. If we can move on to our next slide, please. You've seen these slides before. These are just a recap of the federal funds, the first pot we got. This is, nothing has changed here. It's still the 15.8 with an expiration of September 30th, 2022. The next slide, please. Now, this one, you've seen this before. This is the one that I referred to earlier, that there was a slight change in about $3 million of these funds. You may recall that when we first introduced this fund to you, this funding source, the amount hasn't changed. We're still scheduled to get $40.5 million. But initially, we were supposed to spend $38 million by December 30th, with only a couple of million being extended until next year. Well, there's been another development, and about another $3.5 million has now been extended to September 30th of 2022, which is good because now there's not that mad rush and that pressure of, we don't want to send money back, but then we don't want to rush into anything that, you know, would not be a wise purchase either and use up our cash. So now, the amount that we need to spend by December 30th is about $34 million. So just wanted to clarify that for everyone. Next slide, please. And before I start, I know there's still continued effort to see if we can get even that deadline extended. I'm not hearing that we've given up on that, you know? So we're hopeful that that may improve as well. So just a little quick recap here. Just, and this is also in your board packet in the Consent section of the agenda. It's a list of all the expenditures the district has incurred to date on COVID-19-related items as of August 25th. And so we've organized this into a category just for the slide purposes, just to make it simple. But within your packet, you have the details that, you know, list every single line item that tie up to, you know, these categories. up to these categories. So the top section is a recap of those items we spent on for distance learning and supplemental support services for our students. So for distance learning, we spent about $6 million as of October 25th. On student nutrition, about $1.4 million. Student support services, about $266,000, for a total of $7.8 million. And then the other big piece was mitigating COVID-19, of course. The top section on mitigating COVID-19, which would have included the disinfectants, the constant cleaning, barrier signs that you may have seen throughout the Serna Center if you've been back here in some of the school sites, we spent about $200,000 on that. And on the personal protective equipment, which would include sanitizers, face shields, face masks, about $311,000. And then remote access, so that our staff can work at home securely, safely, and confidentially, about $318,000 on that, for a total of $830,000. So altogether, as of August 25th, we've spent $8.6 million. Now, this is not just with CARES money. We did get a few local grants. We were very, very fortunate to tap into some local grants to help offset the cost of paying some of our staff to work during the spring recess, when normally, they should have been off, but they were working in order to make sure that our students continue to receive meals. And so that was quite an endeavor and effort, as you may recall, and we served many, many sides with that. So we're very fortunate that we were able to continue that service. And the next slide, please. Now, here is our latest plan. I apologize for the small font, but there are many items on here that are going to make up the next phase of our spending. Some of these items are already in the spending queue. And these details are also in your packet in a font that you can read, but I was hoping that we would have shown up a little bit bigger here. Nonetheless, I will do my best to go through them. And then I would like to share with you that if you have any particular question on some of these items, my colleagues will assist me in providing more explanation, because some of these items, of course, are not coming from my office per se, but from other offices throughout the district, and they can share the specific details and the reason for the purchase. So this first page, these are for student services and student needs, of course. You're going to see items here like the playbooks, which is the first one. And I'm not going to read every single one. I know there's going to be questions, but just kind of orient you here. And the other items are things like the Everyday Labs, our Summer Learning Initiative, some professional development for our teachers, some partnerships with our community-based organizations. We're still working out the details on that. That's why we have a TBD to be determined there. Next slide, please. And again, additional services and items for students, headsets that have already been ordered. And then there's a collaboration with SAC State to engage college students that are trained in terms of tutoring to provide online support for some of our students. Additional interpreting services, we've seen the need for that increase substantially, so we're going to expand that contract as well. And then the next slide, please. This is the operation side of the house. This is the piece that's working on really preparing our school sites for when our students return. And our biggest investment here is these items called portable HEPA filters. They're air scrubbers that are going to be placed in all of our classrooms. Very expensive, but these have been proven to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, which we really do want to have that in all of our classrooms. It's a pretty hefty price tag of $20 million, but it's well worth it. And this is something that our students will benefit even post-COVID, in terms of keeping the air quality much healthier in all of our classrooms district-wide. And then the next item is related to that same filter. There's some supplies that are associated with that, the next few items. And we will need to purchase a van in order to transport the supplies and the ongoing maintenance for this equipment. And then the next item on here that's very important are the portable hand-washing sinks. And I'm just going to pause here just for a minute to explain why we're renting these instead of purchasing them. The rental is by far less expensive, and the other thing we get with rental is weekly maintenance. If we purchase them, we have to maintain them, which our staff is already spread very thin, and it would put an added burden and added responsibility on maintaining and disinfecting these portable sinks. In addition to that, post-COVID, we're not sure if we'll have a need for them, so perhaps the investment to purchase is not the best one at this point in time. And the next item are the barriers for when our students do return, just to make sure that we assist them with keeping proper distancing. And these would be great visual cues and physical barriers, just to kind of guide them throughout the campus. Campus's next slide, please. And the next items are things like software to maintain our inventory, spray bottles. We're in need of vehicles. We are finding that our vehicle maintenance department is having to wait to use vehicles because we're very short in supply, and we need to be able to deploy PPE equipment or disinfectant equipment very quickly to our school sites at a much, much higher frequency than before. We are in need of power washers. We don't own any, and this would be very helpful in keeping our facilities clean. And backpack buggers. The other items, next slides, please, are just pretty much the same, vacuum cleaners, hydration stations. This is a very important one as well for our students. We will be purchasing, I believe we already have an on-order, and Mr. Browning is available to answer questions about this as well if needed. We will be purchasing hydration stations for all of our school sites, because we've had to shut off the water faucets, because, of course, they just contribute to the spread of germs. And students simply need to refill their water bottles. And of course, post-COVID, this is going to provide a healthier water supply for our students as well. So pretty excited about that purchase. And then the next items are, again, tools for our staff, laptops for facilities departments. And then the next slide, please. And then camera systems. We need to make sure now that our facilities are not as used as frequently, that we are keeping a watch on them, and we've noticed that we just don't have adequate camera systems throughout our district. So this will assist with that as well. And then the next items are software that is needed by our Human Resources Department. Again, as we're finding that staff are working remotely in order to mitigate COVID-19, it is very difficult to continue the same method of operation and all the paper methods that were so paper-driven. And so these systems would allow us to remotely work with potential applicants as well as our existing employees, allowing them to process paperwork, whether it's changes to benefits or what have you, via an online system. And again, this is something that would be very helpful to the district even post-COVID-19 in making our operations far more efficient and improving the quality. So I went through that, I know, very quickly, but I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions. And again, this is in much more detail within the board packet, if you'd like to refer to that. And then the last slide is just a recap of the pending expenses. They amount to about $27 million. And as I stated earlier, we've spent 8.5 of the federal relief funds. So for a total, we have committed about $35 million. And then the second half of this slide just simply lists for you each of the funding sources and the expiration dates for each one. So as you can see, the one that's right around the corner that will expire in December, that one's about $34 million. So we have already pretty much tagged about the majority of those funds, assuming that everything goes according to plan. Because the way it works in school districts is that we have to have receipts of the product or the service has to be completed in totality in order for us to recognize that expense and that period of spending. So for example, by December 30th, all of the stuff that I just talked about, all of those items have to be on hand, services have to be completed by that date in order for us to charge that fund. So whether or not we're successfully able to do that, we will keep you posted on that. Certainly, a lot of those items have already been ordered. But again, we are competing with the other district statewide, worldwide, actually, I should say, schools worldwide for these items. So the competition is a little fierce right now. And then the next items are just the remaining funding sources by their expiration dates. So altogether, we have about $56.6 million that have been allocated to the district. And so the part that we are semi-reserving for the coming months and the coming terms, depending on what our needs are, is about $21 million. And we will continue to bring back to you the plans as we have more information and we know what the future looks like. Right now, we're just a little hesitant to spend everything down 100%, especially knowing that we can push some of this out just by another year until we have a little bit more certainty. And right now, given the expenses that we've already made and the pending expenses, we have enough items on hand to get us through the next few months. And if something changes, we will certainly let you know. And then the next slide is just, again, just a reminder of our next budget updates of information we'll be bringing to you, our year-end financial statements at the next September board meeting. And then in October, we bring, as required, the proposed revised budget for the coming year, I mean, for this year, excuse me. And then I think that concludes it. Are there any questions?
So Rose, thank you for the incredibly thorough and timely presentation. I know that we have been eager to talk about both the expenditures committed thus far and those pending. Before we open it up to board member questions, we're going to take our public comments on this item. Anne?
Yes, we have four public comments. One is from D-LAC, and I believe they wanted to do a phone-in. I think we have one person online. Samantha, are you going to speak for D-LAC? If not, I can read, because they also did send in their written comment. Well, it looks like she's not available, so their comment for 7.2 is, "D-LAC would like to know how students and/or sites were selected to receive CSUS tutoring services. We would like a report of the overall student demographics, including English learner status, for students receiving tutoring from CSUS. D-LAC would like to know when headphones will be distributed and how can parents request headphones for their students. D-LAC would also like to know why headphones were only purchased for students in primary grades and earbuds for those in secondary grades, as we know that earbuds can cause harm and SCUSD should take all precautions to ensure student safety and comfort." The next comment is from Angie Sutherland and says, "Students with disabilities are included in CARES Act funding to mitigate learning loss. How will the district-proposed expenses help mitigate learning loss? How does the allocation report in the board packet differentiate funding from CARES, ESSR, and learning loss mitigation? It is somewhat unclear. Specifically, we want to know how the spending will address learning loss and close learning gaps and what those learning supports consist of. This question was asked at the CAC meeting last night, but an answer was not given. Also, the spending proposal lists partnerships with community-based organizations, CBO, to provide social, emotional, SEL, health and safety technology. Who are the community organizations and what will they provide specifically and to which students? The proposal lists, quote, 'a collaboration with the CSUS to assign trained college students to provide tutoring services to district students,' unquote. Again, for which students will these services be provided?" Thank you. And the next comment is from Allison French-Toubault and says, "I am pleased to see touchless hydration, HEPA filtration, hypochlorous acid disinfection, and hand washing stations planned for when we can return to school sites. I would like to see additional IT support for teachers, students, and parents for right now. I would appreciate if a board member can ask staff for information on what resources are currently available for tech support and what else has been considered or will be proposed." And the last comment is from Sarah Williams-Kingsley and says, "I am asking the Board of Education to use CARES Act funding, implement actual live commenting for board members to put the goals of, quote, 'conducting meaningful stakeholder engagement,' unquote, and, quote, 'maintaining transparency,' unquote, into practice. Other school districts are allowing the community to comment in person, even if the rest of the room is empty, except for a camera crew, or to call in during the meeting without registering in advance. Community members are entitled to an opportunity to react in real time to actions during the board meeting." And that's the final public comment on this item.
Thank you, Anne. We're going to take board member questions and comments now, a couple each. If I can please see a show of hands or a raised hand in the chat, I'll call upon board members. Board Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Rose, for all the very clear and helpful information. I really appreciate it. I know that this is still in progress, the plan, the way it's developing. So know that this is sort of the expenditures up to date. Just a clarifying question before I move into my questions. The expenditures are dating back to March 2020, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. And then, and just another clarifying question. So the $34 million that needs to be spent by the end of December, that is, that, the total expenditures, the summary of total expenditures of $35 million, that is part of that $34 or is a $34, you know, aside from the $35 million?
It's part of it. You can consider it part of it.
Okay, okay. So a couple of, as we're going through your presentation, a couple of, I think, items that stood out for me, the professional development, the two-day professional development to help teachers prepare, I think that's $2.6 million. And so are those today and tomorrow, is that what's being covered here? Or were those prior to the professional development that is taking place now?
I believe it's today. It's today and tomorrow, yes.
Okay, okay. So I'm just trying to understand, sort of, this is, in addition to, I guess, because we already started the school year, right? So I'm just trying to figure out the additional expenditure in order to support the professional In order for me to understand sort of potentially what can, what may be needed as the year evolves in terms of additional support for teachers. And so I'm just trying to gauge if this is being provided on a regular school day, why it's in addition to, I guess, a normal working day for a teacher. Just trying to understand that part, because I think moving forward, we'll need to identify additional funds for additional support, depending on what is necessary as a system continues to evolve. So just trying to chew on that one a little bit.
Would you like Raul to comment on that?
If he can, if he can. And I think maybe this is too simplistic for me, because if I am going to work and for that day I do professional development, I guess I'm just trying to figure out why I need to get paid extra. Not that it's not warranted, I'm just, again, I'm trying to understand that, because I foresee that they're going to need more support moving forward throughout the year.
Sure. Board Member, just to clarify, those extra funds are going to pay the training that was provided yesterday and the day before, which were additional days added to the certificated work calendar year.
Got it, got it. So we're adding days at the end? No?
Or prior, at the beginning of the year. Yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday. Thank you. Okay, so that would be helpful information, because the professional development happened prior to the first day of the school year.
Correct.
Okay.
Essentially extended the contract duty year to 183 days.
Got it, okay. I think that's important to understand. And again, for me, it's important to understand that because we- And again, for me, it's important to understand that because we could, you know, teachers are, I think, will need additional professional development as distance learning continues to evolve and we're all learning together as to how to, you know, for them to instruct our students and for the rest of us to help support students and teachers in, in the distance learning environment. So I appreciate that clarification. It would be helpful, I think, to add that detail moving forward.
Okay.
And then, and then one additional question and then comment. So my next question, I think, this is something I had mentioned earlier to the superintendent, and I see that two comments were made in public comment already about the opportunity to use CARES dollars to support our tech, technical support, given that it's going to be the lifeline, right? Not only for our, for our students to access their instructions. So I don't know if those conversa, if those conversations or those plans are in, are being considered, but, but how to, how CARES dollars can support the technical team in order to make sure that, that, you know, teachers, parents, and students have the support that they need in a timely manner. So building capacity since it'll be very necessary. I don't know if you want to respond?
If you're asking, it's an allowable cost certainly. And what the plans are for that, I'd have to defer to my colleagues to see what, what they have in the works for the coming weeks or months. Raul or Christine?
I'll just say, Member Garcia, that the question of how we bring additional staffing where these resources allow for it is something that we are looking at very closely, particularly because the positions would probably be temporary during the distance learning period, as well as our conversations with, with our labor partners with respect to, and it's probably not the best term, but repurposing positions because of distance learning, which are conversations that we are having. But thank you for raising that issue related to support in IT. We don't have a very large IT department, and that certainly is an area that, that needs attention, at least during the distance learning period and while we have these temporary one-time funds.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's helpful. And then my, my comment, I guess my request for you is, as you continue to develop the plan, the spending plan with the other pots of money, keeping in mind that these dollars are for mitigating learning loss and that learning, learning loss is happening amongst all students. And I'm thinking in particular, the requests that I'd like to make is that the, how we apportion, I guess, or appropriate to school sites Title I dollars to really support the needs of title, students that fall under that definition because dollars are coming to the district based on that formula, that, that they go to all schools based on the number of students that they have, not necessarily whether or not they need, they have a concentration of the students. And again, it is ever more critical that as these one-time dollars are coming to the district, many of them based on Title I numbers of, of students, and, you know, to support the learning loss and address the, the gaps. These kids are all over the district because we're an open enrollment district. So, so I do, I do, a couple of schools for me come to mind, and I know there are others, but I just, I'm familiar with David Lubin, that doesn't meet the concentration, but students are there, and also Sutter Middle. So I think it's just really important that as we move forward, that we are equitable in the distribution of those dollars because the students are there and the needs are there too. So, so if I can just submit that request. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia.
Other board member comments and questions? Board Member Murawski?
Thank you, President Ryan, and thank you, Rose, for this excellent presentation and for being so responsive to the board's request to, you know, to bring this information forward. I think it's really well presented and it also, you know, it's not just a spending plan. I think it's really making clear to us and to our community kind of what the activities have been. And so it's really, really helpful just to see kind of the, all the nitty-gritty of what, what everyone has been up to. I had a couple of questions. I guess one that relates to the COVID-19 expenditures that have been made to date. And I took a look at that one, and I was curious about, there's about, I think you had in your presentation, a half, one and a half million or so that was allocated towards nutrition. And I'm just curious about that because I know, you know, we talked about nutrition funding before, and we do get federal reimbursement for that. And I know that there's so many needs for our kids right now, so I'm just, just curious kind of, was that over and above what we got federally reimbursed for? Or was there a reason to kind of use these, these limited federal dollars for nutrition services versus other things? Or was it just like everything that's kind of COVID, in the COVID bucket, like we put in as much as possible because we need to spend the dollars?
Not necessarily because of we needed to spend the dollars, but it was mostly for nutrition services in particular. That's where we looked at, okay, what would they have done normally?
Yeah.
We were not experiencing COVID. So it was anything above and beyond because that certainly would have put a serious burden on their operating budget. They're supposed to operate self-sustaining and, you know, live within their means, and so it was going to create a tremendous burden. We were already looking at some calculations and some revenue losses. So it was really fortunate that when these funds came through, that we were allowed to charge those nutrition expenses that were above what they would have normally spent. So that's what you're seeing here.
Okay, so they were additional, kind of, would have been operating, maybe had a deficit for what, for what was going on versus the regular, normal reimbursement they would have gotten? And this kind of filled in that gap? Okay, no, that makes a lot of sense. Okay. The other question, I don't, it's not so much a funding question, but I think that in the CBO, the partnerships with CBOs to provide, you know, support for students, I would like to hear kind of where that is. And I think that it wasn't included in, in the dollars that were, that were added up because it was sort of TBD, right? So that would be, I guess, an additional cost to what, to what was on there. So just curious of first kind of status update and what broadly do we think, you know, the cost would be for the number of students? I think it was maybe 2,000 or something that you thought you could serve through that?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to my colleagues on this one as well. This is one, something that came from, that they're, they're developing, and so I don't want to misspeak to it. And so would it be, Christine, would that be for you?
I actually think that Manpreet might be here with us. Hi, Manpreet. I think Manpreet would do, she'll, she'll, our Director of Youth Development will do a beautiful job. Good evening.
Yeah. If I can just interject very quickly here, Ms. Coward, Member Murawski, this is, as you just said, it's still a TBD item. We have some sort of general thoughts about how we prepare for eventual in-person supports to our students, particularly those that have been impacted most from a learning loss perspective due to the pandemic. And our team has been engaging with a number of CBOs, talking about their capacity and their readiness and sort of conditions of readiness as we continue to look for guidance from Sat County Public Health. And so I can ask Ms. Coward to give you sort of an update of what this might look like in terms of capacity, which we are having discussions with a number of CBOs that we already have a partnership with during our regular academic school year.
Great. And if you could also address whether their, the ACEs funding can pay for, pay for the kind of program you're talking about as well? Thank you.
Yes, good evening. So as you heard in the earlier presentations, our county is allowing to have daycare, childcare camps at the school sites. So we will be, we are thinking about having camps, maximum 40 to 60 students. 40 is our ideal number at this point. We are engaged in conversations with a community partner who has already been running these day camps in other school districts, and one of, that is our neighboring school district, Netomas. I am going actually to one of the day camps in Netomas tomorrow at 8:30 to observe one of the day camps, how the community partner is running so that we can, I can see firsthand the safety and what a kind of protocol they are following. Our objective at this point is that we want to start three camps, day camps, by the end of September. Because we want to start, but we want to start slow, so that we have all the protocols and policies as the county is saying, so we can follow those. The CBO is also going to start day camps in our other neighboring district, which is Algo on the 16th. That's the date I have heard. So we will keep our eyes very open and see and keep observing what's happening. So that's why we want to start by the end of September. And you mentioned earlier about ACEs fund, funding, yes. So we, we can use ACEs funding for day camps. And so if we decide to go with the CBO, we will definitely do an amendment to that contract and we will use some of that funding and hoping to see if we can use some of the other, like COVID relief funds. Because when we start a camp, it's more responsibility ratio. We are thinking about this 10 to 1. There will be a lot more cleaning involved. There will be a lot more staff involved. So to answer your question, yes, ACEs and 21st century funds can be used for this.
Okay, I see. And so the, the COVID relief funding can kind of fill in the gaps of how you have to expand or do extra, you know, have extra expenses for running it during the COVID time?
Yes, CBO has given us a proposal about the amount, they think, like for 40 students. And if we go with the 40 students, we may need very little dollars to add to already the current grant that we have.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm excited to see that, that take shape. I did have one more question about the 20 million, and it's probably a question for facilities and operations. I, you know, I haven't read a whole lot about these portable air scrubbers. It's a huge, huge expense. It's a huge commitment of dollars. So I, I think maybe you can address it real quickly as to why you think, you know, this is, this is the right expenditure of these funds. And I'd love to just, you know, just because it's such a large line item, get some more, some more information about it out to the board so we can really be informed.
Thank you, Member Murawski. This is a great question. I'm really glad to answer it. So we've been looking at a lot of additional options to ensure we can purify the air within our classrooms and common spaces throughout the district. We initially were looking at the HEPA filter air scrubbers, and, but we weren't quite satisfied with it for a number of different reasons, one of them being the really expensive cost. We do believe we found the, the perfect solution right now, though. It is actually not quite a HEPA air scrubber. It's a high-efficiency air purifier with a UVC bulb. So these units are about half the price, maybe a little bit less than that. And they have a couple of different filters in them and then have a high-intensity bulb that actually burns off the virus. And so it's, they're cheaper, much cheaper to maintain in addition to the upfront cost as well. And plus, also because the UVC bulb burns the virus, so we're not concerned about going in and having our staff change out the filters later that may be containing the virus itself.
Thank you, Nathaniel. I actually.
Can we clarify on that, on that question? Would that be, would that mean that it's not 20 million, that's a lower amount?
Yeah, so since the board packet was out, we did get our, more information back. And so it, we're looking right now at about $10 million.
Perfect, thank you.
So Nathaniel, I think that is such a major expenditure. Would love to see a comparison of the HEPA filter with this high-efficiency air purifier with the UVC bulb, because one of my questions was the lifespan of the units that we would be purchasing. I think we should be keeping it in the context of not just coronavirus containment and mitigation, but also the ability to purify the air in fires, as I believe California wildfires will continue to be a huge issue. And, you know, other circumstances where we need to mitigate particulate matter in our classrooms. Many of our classrooms are located very close to freeways. So I would like to kind of understand how we can purchase something that, yes, meets the imperative of COVID, but also these other environmental factors that disproportionately harm some of our students more than others. I did have a question, and I think I'm the last board member with, with questions or comments. In looking at the expenditures, I think that Rose did a phenomenal job breaking this down. I cannot help but notice that we are talking about the bulk of our expenditures towards infrastructure, brick and mortar investment, right? So we're talking about really the physical needs of meeting this moment for COVID-19. And that is concerning to me, even though I understand the rationale from a health and safety perspective. It is concerning to me because, you know, we talked about the CSU tutoring. Well, that is a, that's a hiccup in terms of the investment that we're proposing to make. And so I would really like to figure out, you know, if we can cost-contain things like the HEPA filters, how do we invest more in mental health services, in tutoring, and in CBO support? Because I think that the implications, social and emotional, to our children are going to be grave. And what I don't think is contained here and couldn't be, and Rose, I don't expect you to be able to, from your position, do this, is how we meet that moment. But I would like, with our expenditures, a deeper dive into how we can reflect that as a priority. And I don't know, Superintendent, if you wanted to respond to that?
Yeah, again, I, I do want to just remind the board that at this point, we have not developed a comprehensive plan outside of sort of the immediate needs that we wanted to focus on to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. So we would welcome the opportunity to have another venue or forum, President Ryan, that is more focused, once we are able to cost out with a little bit more accuracy, the infrastructure investments, how we might choose as a governing body to invest in non-infrastructure-related investments. So we, of course, are open to that as we move forward and, and continue to have a better sense of, of what the cost of the infrastructure investments might be, keeping in mind that, that in some ways, we probably do want to move very, very fast. We heard Dr. Casirier's presentation as things continue to advance. I'm not sure how long we will be in this distance learning place or, or, or circumstances, even if we have some resources that we can invest in for the next two years. But we do want to capitalize on the period of time in which our students might need more supports, even if they're virtually.
Absolutely, Superintendent. And as we close this item, I do just want to say, you know, a few years ago, we tried and failed a parcel tax that would have grown the number of student support centers and student support center directors across the district. I did note that allocation in this presentation, and I think we should be looking to, even through a temporary commitment, an ability to expand those services because they often are one stops, but also anchors to other CBO partnerships and familial supports. Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. Thank you, CBO Ramos. We are so grateful for your continued work. You've been just such an incredible leader in these very difficult times. Moving on to item 7.3, Approved Resolution Number 3164, The Harms of School Closure and the Urgency of Reaching Near-Zero Transmission of COVID-19. This evening, it will be presented by Board Member Murawski.
Thank you, President Ryan. Thank you, President Ryan, and appreciate your indulgence in allowing me to present this resolution tonight. Um so this resolution uh does a few things. It's a little, it's a little long, so I'm just going to, I'm not going to read it. I'm going to describe it briefly and then um, you know, more than happy to take any questions or or have a discussion if if folks want. Um so the things it does, it first, like maybe three or four pages, it catalogs the severe harms of school closures. Um it also notes how decisions are being made by by other branches of government that are constraining our ability to reopen safely, because the decisions that those entities are making are increasing or decreasing COVID, and that is in turn dictating what we can do. Um it also asks for clear reopening guidance from state and county government, and it calls on state and county decision makers to adopt a plan and implement strategies to get to very low COVID nineteen numbers by the end of the year, so we can get back to school. So uh briefly, on the list of harms, it was really, it's it's long, and it was really depressing, actually, to do some of this research and to just, I mean, all of these things that are kind of compound on each other. Um so there's, there's a lot. I just want to highlight a couple of things that really stuck out to me. Um so our own data reflects back, you know, in the spring, that uh when we looked at who engaged uh three days a week or more. So there was like a sixty percent or more engagement. That was the, you know, the level of engagement. Our homeless students and uh our students experiencing homelessness and our black students were the least likely out of all groups to engage uh sixty percent or more in distance learning. Engagement of of our high school students in distance learning was poor across the board. Only about forty percent of our students were engaging in distance learning, three days or more a week in the spring. Um and over only about a quarter of our students experiencing homelessness were engaging at that level in the spring, a quarter. Um and so research projects severe learning loss associated with, um you know, being in, being in that environment. Um school closures can also result in social isolation and abusive homes, with abuse more likely now, because everyone is stressed and it's exacerbated. Um and also child, child welfare referrals have plummeted uh across the state, probably across the country, since since school closures uh due to COVID happened. Um and finally, I'd like to just highlight one other thing that I think doesn't get a whole lot of recognition, but I see it happening everywhere, um is that women are being forced out of the workforce in great numbers. And this is such a concern, um you know, as a working mother myself who's struggling with, you know, all the demands that are placed on us. And when, when women's careers get derailed, you know, especially if they're, you know, uh in the middle of their careers, it that can be a lifelong impact. So it's not just immediate financial instability, but really um instability that might last the rest of someone's life. So anyways, those are just a couple of the things that stuck out to me. There's a whole lot more. So I just suffice it to say, the risk of keeping our kids out of school is really severe. Uh so the longer it lasts also, the more damage we will do. And I think people need to realize that distance learning cannot be just misconstrued as somehow adequate uh as a substitute for in-person learning. It's just not. So we know school closures are really, really bad. Uh so does that mean we should just open up regardless of what's happening in the community? Some people think that it does. I don't, I don't think so. There's just, there's too much fear, there's too much risk. We can't subject our community to that. We're ready to implement all the protocols at our schools, but we need to solve the underlying problem. And so that is, the single best policy to support school reopening is to suppress the levels of COVID nineteen to near zero. So just to get them down really low, so our public health professionals can stay on top of like isolated cases and outbreaks that that do occur. So the education sector, we know can't do that alone. This has to be a whole community effort. So I just want, you know, to to put this out there publicly, because if we care about reopening our schools as parents, as board members, we are the ones that have to advocate for our kids. There's no one, no, we are the cavalry. It's it. No one else is coming to save us, to save our kids from school closures. So I think we need to educate people about the deep consequences, the lifelong consequences of what is happening to our kids right now. And we need to demand a more effective public health response with the intensity and focus and urgency that we just have not seen yet from our, from our communities. Um, you know, all the things that they can do, public health orders, enforcement, testing, contact tracing, um public information campaigns, educating people about what they need to do, quarantine, support, vaccination distribution when that's available. We need to like be on it and not let happen what happened in the summer happen again. So, you know, it's not going to be easy. There's lots of competing priorities, and that's why I think we need to get out there and be loud. So this resolution, um it calls on uh, you know, like I said, state and local governments, Governor Newsom, the California Department of Public Health, Sacramento County Public Health, to prioritize our children in schools and adopt a plan to get down to close to zero by the end of the year. It's almost four months from now. We can do it. And also to reject public health uh or changes to orders in public health that will go against that, you know, opening high-risk, other high-risk um uh inside uh establishments that aren't as crucial as schools. It commends the County Board of Supervisors for allocating significant resources, which they did last month, to the public health effort, and encourages them to do more if it's necessary. And um it also calls for guidance that is consistent about when we should reopen our schools. So right now, uh as Dr. Casirier mentioned, we're at purple. We can reopen when we get to red, which is substantial risk. We can reopen. That's not that meaningful to me to say we can reopen when there's still way, like a lot of virus circulating in our community. Our community needs us to support us to make that a real choice by uh getting the viral level down. So, and I think that's, you know, besides that, just calling on all business and community leaders and all people across the board to just do what we can to support our students and get them back to school. So with that, happy to hear any comments or answer any questions. And I appreciate your indulgence again. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Morowski. Member Pritchett, before I take a question from you, we're going to take public comments on this item.
There are five public comments, and the first is from Ryan Fong, and it says, I support the adoption of agenda item seven point three, resolution thirty one sixty four. The next comment is from Nicole Jared and says, as a parent in the district and a public health professional, I am wholly in support of this resolution, calling for stronger action from our local governments to take the necessary measures to reach near zero transmission of COVID in Sacramento and make possible the safe reopening of schools. Next comment is from Christina Thompson and says, as a mom with a special needs child, distance learning is impossible. It is unreasonable to expect my kinder son with Down Syndrome to sit in front of a screen with teachers and peers he has never met. There is no progress with this model. It is a time drain, and students need to be brought back to campus. The next comment is from Gwene Bird and says, I fully support Board Member Morowski's resolution that focuses on how to stop the spread of COVID nineteen in our community so that we can safely reopen schools with confidence and without the worry that we might have to shut down schools again because of another surge in cases. The focus should be on containment, not on a quote rush to reopen, unquote. And the last comment is from Caroline Nasala and says, I support this resolution. Distance learning is not sufficient. We need to safely get our children back to school. And that's the final public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Moretti. Board Member Pritchett and Board Member Vang, did I see your hand go up? Okay, and followed by Board Member Vang.
I just wanted to move this resolution.
Thank you, Board Member Pritchett. Board Member Vang?
Yeah, I just wanted to um say publicly, I want to thank Member Morowski for bringing this resolution and doing the research and the homework to bring it to the board. Um, you know, I too echo uh many of the sentiments that you said. I think we are in the midst of a fight of figuring out distant learning, but when we take a step back, I think we can't lose sight that we're all, as a community, is fighting a virus, right? And that if we really want to talk about the education of our kids and, you know, making sure that we can open our school, we got to make sure that we bring down those levels of cases. And so I just want to commend you for bringing this to the board, um and I fully support it. The other thing I also wanted to share, perhaps, you know, because I hear your call on the regional aspect, and I would love, uh, Member Morowski, if we can send this resolution to, you know, our um other local jurisdictions, so that they adopt a similar resolution, because I also think we could do this resolution alone, but then it'll just sit on the shelf, right? And so also a call to action for like our city councils, our county soup's, um, you know, other local school districts to adopt something similar. And I think, um, you know, doing that is 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 powerful, right? So that as Sac City Unified School District, we're not just doing one reso, but we're asking um other district and other local jurisdiction to join us. So with that, um, you know, I I'd be happy to also help you co-send, send it, email it, ask other folks to do something similar, um, and just want to thank you for bringing that uh to the board, so.
Great. Thank you so much, Member Vang. And um I did reach out to CSBA to um try to share it with other, um, so I'll let you know how that goes, and I appreciate your help, and I will take you up on that.
Board Member Morowski, before we adopt the resolution, I do want to say, you know, I appreciate the time, um and incredible detail and research that you put beyond, behind this resolution. Um, you know, at the heart of this resolution is this idea that we will only reopen our schools if we get the um commitment from stakeholders across the region. And I really do believe we have an opportunity beyond what uh Board Member Vang just shared to lead the region and perhaps the state in some conversation around what an intentional plan with metrics looks like for getting to a place where we can safely reopen our schools. I know that I've already had some preliminary conversations with the mayor and his staff about convening such a regional conversation, um and coordinating with the governor's office is a potential way to lift it up in other areas of the state. So would love to continue that and appreciate the resolution that you've put together as an anchor for that very critical work.
Thank you all.
So we have a motion and a second, um student preferential vote.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Okay, we can do a roll call vote.
Uh, Member Ryan?
Yes.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Yes.
Member Wu?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
The motion carries. Again, thank you, Board Member Morowski, for the incredible dedication and energy you put into this. Item eight point oh, public comment. Do we have any public comment on non-agendized items?
Yes, we have um twelve public comments. One is a phone in from Richard Vasquez, and it looks like he is online.
Good evening, uh Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, members of the board. Uh again, I appreciate you uh updating this, uh, you know, the public comment. So I thank you for that. But again, I'll piggyback off what Williams Kingley said about, you know, the in-person thing, and if people are, other districts are doing it and whatnot, let's try to, uh, you know, it's more meaningful, uh, you know, and it's hard to be ahead of this. I struggle trying to do the emails while that was going on, so that was difficult. But again, I want to thank uh Hiram Johnson and uh for they, they created these warrior groups, so the first day was pretty smooth. And thank you, Mr. Seengley. He's been on top of the stuff, and I I got to sit in for the first half, and, you know, he's making it comfortable, easing everyone in, so I appreciate that. But I did want to get back to uh a couple quotes that Mr. Aguilar stated. Our task is to make sure that we are, give every student an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. And today, unfortunately, that's not, that gutting principle has not come to life. Again, we're having these teacher vacancies over here at uh Hiram Johnson. We're up three teachers. That means the kids are going to live what my kid lived and what my family lived, and it was terrible, like just you're pushing kids away from from education. I'm living it. I don't know why these other parents don't come here and speak it up, because again, you're, I put all my time and energy, thousands of hours, and I couldn't get the basics of an education going in a freshman year at one of your most struggling school sites. That's why we're struggling. Give us our teachers. The the numbers are stating that. Uh, another quote from that, focused on helping us understand what are the systems that we have created in Sac City that we sustain and maintain. I mean, this calendar change, this uh Hiram Johnson has experienced increased uh enrollment from their projection three years in a row. I mean, isn't this a system thing? Are we paying attention to what's going on? Why do I have to call this out? I'm a poor, uneducated male, don't got time for this. I'm focusing on the basics of get, get these kids teachers. I can't even focus on my PTSD stuff. I'm looking like a loser, because I can't put all that time in that, because I'm still focused on getting teachers in the classroom. That's just not fair to me, my kids, the whole site. Show us you care about us. Quit treating us like trash. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next public comment is from Rashida Dunnesser and says, um, parents interested in homeschooling their students should apply before early October twenty twenty to access funds allocated to parents to successfully set up their, to successfully set up home classrooms. Uh, the next public comment is from Mari Helmer and says, I am teaching distance learning with another school district right now. The hours need to be shortened as there is double the prep work, teaching online, technical work, and emails, et cetera. Propose first period, eight thirty to nine, ten. Second period, nine, twenty to ten o'clock. Third period, ten, twenty to eleven o'clock. Fourth period, eleven, twenty to noon. Lunch, twelve to twelve forty. Fifth period, twelve forty to one twenty. And sixth period, all prep, one twenty to two P M. Five point five hours, school hours. The next comment is from Junior Goris and says, Mr. Superintendent, President Ryan, and esteemed members, thank you for allowing me to say a few words. I want to start by saying a heartfelt thank you to all for leading us on this first day of a new school year. We have many obstacles, and I know you're all working hard to get us to the other side. Thank you. I want to express my concerns about the unsuccessful negotiations that just recently took place. The district's learning plan must include additional time for vulnerable students and figure out a solution to record lessons. While I do understand some of the labor partners' concerns for recording, we must stay focused on the students. Some students will need recorded lessons to be able to access lessons when their time allows. The students are the very center of our district. They are the only thing that matters. God bless us all, and S U S D. The next comment is from Shawna Fellers and says, I have been a S U S D parent for over twelve years, and this is my first public comment during a board meeting. While I come from a family of teachers and believe our local teachers are amazing, they are getting very poor representation by uh by the S C T A. The insulting tone of their documents, the stonewalling, and their last-minute demands are unacceptable. The same teachers that teach social emotional learning, S E L, need to recognize that their S C T, that their S C T A leadership is disrespectful and counterproductive. For instance, bringing seventy-five teachers to a negotiation is an ambush, not a good faith effort. Over the years, I've watched many district leaders and board members try their best, then give up, while S C T A leaders have remained the same. What's the common denominator to all these years of antagonism, S C T A leaders? Our amazing teachers deserve much better representation than they are getting. Working families deserve to be able to plan their lives, but the ultimate shame is that students are not getting the education they deserve. Can we insist on a mediator that specializes in labor negotiation best practices and sets clear ground rules to promote true collaboration? The next comment is from Janie Marks and says, I have been a teacher in S U S D for twenty years. I have never felt more disrespected and undervalued than I do now. I work hard for the children and families in my class. I strive for creativity and collaboration with every lesson. I see each child and am motivated to meet their complex needs each and every day. The current school board and our superintendent continually act and speak as though I cannot be trusted to educate the young people before me. Their actions and demands for such strict scripted lessons is insulting and demoralizing. The next comment is from Taylin Wong and says, I am a parent of four S U S D students and a teacher at California Middle School. I have had fantastic experiences with my children's teachers and principals. When my daughter was in a traffic accident last year, two principals and her former teacher were in the I C. teacher were in the ICU that day showing love and concern. They were followed by a former principal, another former teacher, her little sister's teacher, and three of her current teachers making multiple visits to the hospital. When COVID shut down the schools in the spring, my children's teachers went above and beyond, learning new skills on their own and at their own expense, purchasing new equipment out of their own pocket to make distance learning better, collaborating with their colleagues to provide valuable educational experiences, responding with grace and care to my children's misbehavior in a new setting, reaching out to me to let me know what was going on. As a teacher, I have worked under three SCUSD principals, all of whom respect the experience and expertise of teachers, all of whom worked tirelessly to cut the red tape to allow their employees to practice their craft for the benefit of students. I have worked with district administrators. One worked with passion to gather information from teachers, facilitate collaboration between teachers of the same subject at different schools, and get approval for necessary curriculum materials and supplies so that the fine arts wouldn't be forgotten in this grand shift to distance learning. Another attended hours of work group meetings with SCTA members earlier this month, where she showed great respect for the expertise of teachers, gratitude for their hard work in a difficult situation, and understanding of the needs of students to not be strapped to a screen for endless hours. All of these experiences make it very difficult for me to understand what has happened in the last few weeks. Why does the district's proposal for bargaining reflect no respect for teachers, no gratitude for their hard work through a difficult transition, or understanding the needs of students?" The next public comment is from Denise Nelson and says, "I appreciate that our teachers have the education and training to make professional decisions for teaching their students. However, the district administration has the responsibility of ensuring equity for all schools, classrooms, and the students they serve with the training and expertise of their staff. Also, the district and school board are responsible for keeping our district solvent in order to not go into receivership. These should be priorities kept in mind during negotiations. The district needs to set guidelines with these in mind." The next comment is from Mary King and says, "I am a teacher who has been working all summer to prepare for this school year, whether it was to start in person or distance learning. And here we are during the first week of school, and SCUSD administration decides to cram all this training at once and expect teachers to show up and jump right in. We are working hard to reach students and teach them in this difficult time, expecting students to show up and be ready to learn. At the same time, the district is making decisions without input from teachers who are in the trenches, maneuvering this distance learning with all the issues, and the board members and superintendent does not show up. Let's stop playing games and make decisions based on the needs of students and classroom teachers instead of the wants and whims of those sitting in the high castle on the hill." Next comment is from Angie Sutherland and says, "Over the years, school climate has, has remained a, an important focus for parents of the CAC and the Coalition for Students with Disabilities. I and other coalition parents would like to work together with our district and schools to enhance and improve bullying prevention and intervention so that all students can feel safe at school and in the community. Specifically, we want to be part of the school climate collaboration, and we want to help involve other disability community organizations that have shown an interest and willingness to partner with our district, um, such as NAMIYO, Disabled and Proud. Through our dis, through our research, we learned that bullying information is being tracked inconsistently in our district. And the district's responsive records received, it states that in 1819, SCUSD did not track the motivation behind reported bullying incidents, uh, towards protected categories. But this was particularly tracked the year before, again, only partially. We want to ensure that our district has a well-informed response to bullying and targeted areas to focus on for prevention of bullying, harassment, and discrimination. We will follow up with a written letter to request to be part of the collaboration and lend out assistance as a community partner. Also, I understand that SCUSD is under the CCEE, Systemic Instructional Review, SER, process, due to chronic systemic challenges and requires assistance. Will the CAC, the families, and the students with disabilities be involved in focus groups or interviews in that effort to ensure a strong and diverse voice? Will information be shared with the public about this and other reviews which may be underway?" The next, um, public comment is from Sarah Williams Kingsley and says, "I want to comment on the status of negotiations about distance learning plans with SCTA. The SCTA plans that have been made public are focused on what's best for teachers, not for students. All of our students need a robust distance learning plan that includes virtual face-to-face time with their credentialed teacher and their peers. They need connection after many months at home. They need robust instruction, not just assignments that end up like independent study. If the teachers' union cannot commit their members to providing this, the district should expect families to pull their students from the district. Many families have already made this choice. Teachers can't be laid off now, but once the dust of the pandemic settles and their classes are under-enrolled, they should expect some in their ranks will be unemployed. As parents, we are tired of begging for the bare minimum. SCTA's plan is full of the word, quote, "may," may use, may consider, may elect. This is not contract language, this is language used to hedge. I was thrilled when SCUSD released its return-to-school academic plan this summer. It was obvious to me that it incorporated the feedback from parents about the serious problems with distance learning in the spring. It showed deep thought and concern about how to make sure SCUSD's existing inequities didn't overwhelm our most under-resourced students and families. Many of our students, including my own, received little to no actual interaction or instruction from their teachers in the spring outside of assigned work. I was battling an illness at the time and unable to dig in and fight to get my child what he might need. I'm sure I'm not alone." And the next, um, public comment was sent in from Atasi Upal and says, "Please see attached letter that we submit as a written group public comment for today's board meeting. Our four organizations appreciate your attention to our concerns about the draft SCUSD learning continuity and attendance plan. We hope the letter can be read aloud in its entirety, and if not, we ask that all board members receive a copy of the attached letter." And it's from Disability Rights California, Equal Justice Society, National Center for Youth Law, Western Center on Law and Poverty. And it says, "Dear School Board Members and Superintendent Aguilar, we write to provide a group public comment on the draft learning continuity and attendance plan dated August 28, 2020. As for advocacy organizations that represent students with disabilities who are enrolled in the district, including Black students with disabilities, we urge you to provide additional information in the plan about how you will provide supports and services that meet the needs of these students. While we are encouraged by the district's stated commitment to providing specialized supports to students, more detail and transparency is necessary to ensure students with disabilities receive needed services, do not face inappropriate school discipline, and are not treated differently from their peers because of their intersecting identities such as race and ability. Our concise feedback below contains, oh, below concerns 11 topics that the district must address before adopting a final plan. For your reference, we include specific page references in the plan that relate to our comments. One, individualized education program, IEP, updates and addenda. Define IEP addenda further, including information on what proportion of students with disabilities in the district currently have such addenda on file. Describe any circumstances in which the district will create an emergency plan, a plan explaining the IEP services in the event of physical school closure for a student prior to, rather than at, their next IEP meeting. See pages 35 to 36. Two, IEP services. Explain how the district will assess whether students with disabilities need additional consultation from staff or accessibility tools, including which staff will make that assessment. Clarify whether behavior intervention specialists will be available off-site to assist students with disabilities in person if needed." And this was the last public comment.
Member Pritchett, you're on mute.
Thank you, Miss Member Murawski. Uh, item 9.0, public hearing. Item 9.1, public hearing, learning continuity and attendance plan. Vincent Harris and Stephen Ramirez Fong.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris, Chief of Continuance Improvement and Accountability, and I'm joined in this evening's presentation, uh, by Stephen Ramirez Fong, uh, who's our LCAP SIPSA coordinator, and then we'll actually have, uh, a few distinguished guests from both our, uh, LCAP PAC Parent Advisory Committee and our District English Learner Advisory Committee, uh, to wrap up this presentation. Uh, tonight, we'll be opening the public hearing for the learning continuity and attendance plan, and really, there are three key themes, um, that I'll say the presentation orients around. Our aspirations as a district in terms of delivering on the promise of, of all of our students, uh, and then also thinking through, it's a snapshot, so the, the gear, the, the focus of this plan is not a, a rigorous, like, LCAP plan, but it is meant to be a snapshot of where we are in our distance learning journey, and the plan is meant on its own to be obsolete relatively quickly after it's created because it's, the requirement is just to speak to where we are right now, our current reality. And then also, it, uh, the plan speaks to intersections, intersections with our stakeholders in terms of their aspirations for the system, uh, intersections with our fiscal department, because though the plan is not meant to be a fiscal plan, we have checked our numbers with, with Rose and her team, and then also just intersections overall, uh, with staff in terms of making sure that we build a coherent plan that speaks to all of the work that's been underway and ties directly to our return-together plan. And so that's the overarching theme of, of the presentation as we go into the public hearing this evening. Uh, if we go to the next slide? And so the learning, uh, continuity and attendance plan really was born out of Senate Bill 98, uh, which speaks to a plan that basically provides a moment-in-time snapshot of how districts, um, are dealing with and managing through distance learning. Uh, with Senate Bill 98, uh, there also is the elimination of our LCAP, or Local Control and Accountability Plan, uh, that was previously postponed to December of 2020. And so, uh, ultimately, what we're really thinking through here is using the LCA plan, if you will, as a way to start front-loading what we expect to appear in our next LCAP that you'll see in, in June of next year. Go to the next slide. And so again, as we think about this plan, there are some differences between our learning continuity and attendance plan versus the traditional LCAP. Uh, first and foremost, the level of rigor in terms of, of the goal statements and analysis. This plan is more snapshot-oriented, so, uh, ultimately, uh, it will not necessarily, it will not have all the, the rigor that you see in, in a traditional LCAP. Uh, the expenditures, we, we've, uh, again, coordinated with our fiscal department, we actually blend some of the expenditures we already have defined in our LCAP, plus some of the new, uh, expenditures that, uh, CBO, uh, Ramos covered with you this evening. And then finally, in terms of just the, the regulatory element of it, uh, SCOE, our county office doesn't necess, does not approve the LLC plan, they will provide, uh, some, some impressions of it, where with an LCAP, uh, we have a much more rigorous standard in terms of an approval. So that's just the context of, of what you're seeing this evening, but I think the theme really to take from this is that our LCA plan is actually the first, uh, opportunity to really front-load the key issues that we'll see in our LCAP, because the, the power of this experience for us through the summer, uh, given the tight timeline, is that we had an opportunity to hear from many of our stakeholders, uh, many of those same comments you see reflected in public comment and in other comments we've heard, uh, have been incorporated as we think about ways in which to build a stronger LCAP that, again, you'll see next spring. Uh, with that, I'll turn this presentation over to Mr. Ramirez Fong.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Chief Harris, and good evening, Board Members and Superintendent. This slide provides a brief overview of the plan development process. This has been an accelerated timeline with CDE, the California Department of Education, sharing early drafts of the template in mid-July and providing the final template on July 31st. Stakeholder engagement and development of the plan did begin early, uh, end of June and early July and is still in progress. Now, this is an active process, and we're going to continually align to district plans, uh, respond to our PAC and DLEC comments, and finally, uh, update our budget projections as those final numbers occur. And following tonight, uh, we will, of course, make additional revisions based on input that we receive, um, and additional work that's occurring in parallel. And we'll be back 2% for adoption at the September 17th meeting. Uh, the County Office of Education may provide feedback in the form of recommendations, and if they do so, uh, the board would need to review those at a public meeting within 15 days of receipt. Uh, and I just want to mention, uh, on behalf of all of my colleagues, to the appreciation for the many district departments who have contributed to the plan. Now, the LCA plan and other plans of this nature, wouldn't be possible without their development of content and responding to stakeholder input. Uh, and this has included their work on the return-together plans, which we've aligned to. Next slide, please. Uh, detailed here are just a few of the stakeholder events that have occurred, uh, from late June through August. Now, the listening sessions noted were facilitated by the superintendent and executive leadership to gather input on the reopening of schools. And overarching themes from our input, um, across our, uh, different engagement opportunities are provided later in this presentation. Uh, and we do want to note that we have, um, received feedback from SCOE, um, to try to make the plan as concise as possible, and of course, it is still a long plan, um, so we have, uh, hosted additional detailed, um, stakeholder comments on the website. Next slide, please. Uh, so this slide and the next several slides provide a brief summary of the key elements from each of the learning continuity and attendance plan sections. And this is, again, a lengthy document, and so this is a very high-level summary of what's in the plan, uh, and, and just would note again that we are aligned into the return-together plans that have been released, um, and we are including some of those elements that are still being negotiated. And so in the general information section, some of the key impacts of COVID-19 on the district and community are discussed. This includes access to basic services, physical separation from supports, isolation from the, uh, one's community, and the exacerbation of existing inequities. This section of the plan also discusses the ongoing impact of systemic racism and violence against Black and Brown students, families, and community members, and the additional trauma that this layers on top of the pandemic's effects. In the stakeholder engagement section, and again, there's going to be some additional details at the end with our PAC and DLEC members, outlines the efforts made to solicit input, uh, a summary of the feedback received, and a description of how the plan was influenced. Next slide, please. Now, we heard earlier, uh, tonight around some of the considerations of in-person instructional offerings. In the plan, uh, we talk about what it will take to offer that and what it's deemed necessary to do so. Um, and key in this section is a reminder that we will, as a district, continue to seek guidance from and comply with the state and county public health officials, and we include descriptions of cohorting students, maintaining physical distancing, ventilation, disinfection, and traffic pattern preparations. We also discuss the flexible instructional model that would include the continued use of Google Classroom, so if there's any need to pivot back to distance learning, that the district can remain nimble in that case. Uh, and last but not least, we highlight the fact that families and students will be provided the option to remain in distance learning for the 2021 school year, if and when in-person instruction resumes. Next slide, please. Uh, key elements of the district's plan to maintain continuity of instruction during distance learning include daily live instruction, availability of recorded lessons, use of Universal Design for Learning, or UDL, as a foundation for instructional design, weekly communications from school to home, and the use of Google Classroom as a common learning management system. To ensure that access to devices and connectivity are maintained, the district continues to distribute Chromebooks, uh, which you heard about this evening, and is providing hotspots on an as-needed basis, and has continued the partnership with Comcast to provide low-cost connectivity to eligible families. Next slide, please. Implementation of the district's common assessments in alignment with the Common Assessment Calendar is a key component of assessing student needs and progress. This is also a key step in measuring learning loss, which is in another section of the plan. Uh, multiple measures will be used to track participation and engagement. Uh, this is not simply going to be reliant upon the presence or absence of a student in a Zoom session, will involve multiple, um, uh, measures. Professional development, uh, as you've heard in the past, will focus on Universal Design for Learning, UDL, and the first launch of the MTSS, or Multi-Tierred System of Supports Cohort. And Google Classroom, implementation of the Common Assessments, and practices for minor during engagement will also be areas of focus. And last on this slide, um, all staff across the district are adapting their roles and responsibilities to distance learning. Um, and in this section, we highlight just a few of the key shifts, um, that are being asked of staff, such as contact tracing, health monitoring, supporting virtual instruction in synchronous and asynchronous context, and the additional types of outreach, uh, that are occurring to reengage students and families in the distance context. Next slide, please. The final section within the distance learning program portion of the plan is where supports for pupils with unique needs are described. Uh, this section includes description of designated integrated ELD, English Language Development, considerations for students with disabilities, use of UDL, or Universal Design for Learning. considerations for students with disabilities, use of UDL, or Universal Design for Learning, and the targeted small group and one-on-one supports that will be happening during that additional distance learning instruction time. Pupil learning loss will be measured through end-of-year benchmark assessments from the previous grade level and then monitored ongoing with benchmark assessments from the current grade level. Use of these assessments and ongoing formative assessment will guide the use of small group and one-on-one support sessions. Next slide, please. The mental health and social emotional well-being of our students and families is a priority. And this section highlights the integration of social emotional learning into the core curriculum, the ongoing monitoring of student well-being, and some of the tiered supports that are used to promote mental health awareness and deliver targeted support when needs are identified. Re-engaging students is something you've heard of in many of our opening of schools presentations. And the students and families who have been unreachable or unengaged, that's been a major focus of efforts throughout the district, district spring and summer work, and it's still underway, as you heard earlier. The tiered re-engagement strategies that are based on ongoing monitoring will continue to function to bring students back into a fully engaged status if the monitoring indicates that they're demonstrating signs of unengagement. Next slide, please. Differences of school nutrition, nutrition services to deliver meals in the distance learning context are continuing. As you've heard in the past, some best practices were developed in the spring and summer and will be used in the curbside pickup process. And then when in-person instruction resumes, there'll be designated locations around campuses to pick up meals, as well as to eat meals. That will all be, of course, conducted with social distancing practices. The Increased or Improved Services section of the plan highlights those actions that are increasing and improving services for our low-income students, English learners, foster youth, and homeless youth. This section includes actions that are new to the COVID context, as well as existing district actions that support the efforts described in the plan that have been present in previous LCAPs, per Chief Harris's comments earlier. Next slide, please. This last slide, before we get to our stakeholder comments, is just a high-level summary of our projected expenditures. And again, as was mentioned earlier, this LCA plan, the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, blends actions that predated school closures and some of those that you've heard this evening from Chief Business Officer Ramos's presentation that are involved with mitigating COVID. And some of those are those actions that are supporting in-person instruction safety. So here, you'll see across the four sections, in-person instruction, distance learning program, pupil learning loss, and additional actions. Just some highlights, this is not comprehensive, every action that's in the plan, as well as the total funds that are represented in each of those sections. So at this point, I'm very pleased to introduce Yova Alasantamaria, President of DLEC, Renee Webster-Hawkins, LCAP Parent Advisory Committee member, and Leona Sanchez, also from DLEC, our Vice President there. And they will be sharing some of the overarching themes that emerge from the range of stakeholder input, as well as some of the key priorities that have reemerged and that will serve as some bridges into our LCAP, or Local Control and Accountability Plan process for the coming year. And following that, we'll be opening the public hearing. I believe we're starting with Renee.
Thank you, Stephen. Moving to the next slide. I wanted to just say that I'm so proud and humbled to be part of a really strong LCAP Parent Advisory Committee. Because in June, the board extended our terms. We have both dug in and stepped up. We did not take a summer break. We've continued to meet as a full PAC and in small groups throughout the summer. And in the long list of stakeholder outreach, I think there's been LCAP members at each of those convenings, listening and helping to facilitate those convenings. So we've really tried to solicit the input of the broadest set of parents and families and students and stakeholders that we can. We know that there's more out there. And yet, I think we've done a good job in lifting up the priorities that we've recommended as an LCAP PAC. And I'd like to underscore what Vincent indicated, that even though this Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan is somewhat of a temporary measure in light of COVID-19, I also appreciate that he acknowledged that in our district, we're also using it as an on-ramp to highlight systemic change that can be, that can serve all of our students to our goal of ensuring equity of instruction and outcomes and social emotional support beyond COVID-19. So really, just at the highest level, this slide indicates a lot of what's been already communicated in a variety of ways, but that the LCAP PAC really sees that this plan is an opportunity to disrupt what hasn't been serving our students well, to do things differently, and to think about how many of the initiatives that were already germinating before the pandemic, how we can implement some of those systemic improvements to better serve all of our students and achieve equity across our system. That one size does not fit all. And again, this is the hallmark of a multitiert system of supports, where you have highly qualified and highly trained classroom teachers that can differentiate their instruction and their social emotional support, and where we have student support centers on all campuses to meet those mental health and other physical needs of all of our students and families. So we're really hoping that this LCA plan can start to serve as the foundation for more enduring structures that can outlive this pandemic. Again, we know that distance learning in the spring was not effective. And so we're very supportive of the Return to Learning Plan. And actually, would like to think that much of the work of the LCAP PAC in the last year or so served to inform the Return to Learning Plan that the district is proposing. We need to focus on every one of our most vulnerable students in our planning and implementation and not rest until we know that our most vulnerable students are being well-served. And it's not just about academic outcomes, that social emotional support is critical. So the investments in the student support centers are really just as necessary as our academic investments.
Next slide, please.
And these are just key ideas that emerged across most of all stakeholder input solicited. Parents, guardians, and caregivers need much more support to effectively partner in the education of students at home. This includes clear guidance for what they should expect from distance learning, opportunities to engage in two-way dialogue regarding district planning and their own students' learning and training, resources and support to utilize technology and support learning at home. It should also include language support for people who can't access this at English. Training and accountability for staff are both critical. We need to reduce the amount of variation in program implementation and their instructional experience of students and families. Specific training for distance learning is needed. Provide support to students and families to address access and connectivity issues that impact their ability to engage in distance learning. Students should have the option to continue distance learning for the remainder of the year, even when some of in-person instruction reserves. Next slide, please. And this is stakeholder input for the LCAP plan. Has reemphasized key priorities shared in past input. And these key priorities will be key guiding posts in the development of the 2021-22 LCAP. Some of these examples include, but are not limited to, increase the number of bilingual staff, including instructional aid, teachers, counselors, and ELD training specialist staffing; increase the amount of counseling services at schools to increase and improve mental health support, academic advising, and college and career guidance.
And again, the investments in our student support centers and making sure that all school sites have the same ability to outreach and wraparound services for all of our students, but especially our most vulnerable students. And that the increased funding for interpretation and translation within the matriculation and orientation centers are critical to provide the continuity that all of our students deserve during this time.
Thank you, Yova and Renee. Yova, was there an additional comment that was going to support one of your points made?
I think Leona would like to do it during public comment, if that's possible.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So with that, next slide, please. We will open up the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have seven public comments. We have a phone-in comment from Liz Guillen and Samantha Tran, but it looks like just Samantha is online. Samantha, are you there?
Oh, excuse me, can you hear me?
Oh, hi, Liz. Ms. Guillen, you are combining your comments with Samantha Tran. So I think that they have three organizations that have submitted a letter. They're combining it for one five-minute comment.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar and Board Members. This is Liz Guillen of Public Advocates. As President Ryan said, we submitted comments in coalition with the Education Trust West and Children Now. And I'm going to share some of my time with Samantha Tran of Children Now. Okay, Samantha.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samantha Tran. I'm a proud parent of a Sac City middle school student and, as Liz mentioned, a statewide equity advocate with an organization called Children Now. While the challenges our school community faced during the spring were understandable, I mean, we were all grappling with the stress and trauma of our daily lives being upended and working to find ways to continue to educate students in the midst of all of that uncertainty and often chaotic times. We do know that far too many children suffered significant learning loss over the last several months and that it's exacerbating already intolerable gaps in opportunities and outcomes. What is needed moving forward is very clear guidance on what students, parents, guardians, and educators can expect with respect to distance learning, and a true commitment to equity by ensuring that students that are struggling receive the additional support they need. And I think we saw that in a lot of the comments that parents made through the various processes. There are a number of strategies laid out in the Learning Continuity Plan that, if implemented, would make some positive steps in that direction. And in particular, I'm personally really appreciative that the plan lays out specific information on the amount of daily live instruction students will receive. Access to synchronous learning during the spring was severely lacking. For my child, for virtually every family I know in the district, students need to be in a communal environment and be supported by their teachers daily. In addition, I think it's paramount that these sessions are recorded. Even if it's just the teacher's voice in a screen share, many kids are going to have connectivity issues, may have a challenging environment at home any given day, or just need an opportunity to revisit the content. And without that support, many children will be denied, fundamentally denied, access to their right to a public education. And finally, you know, we wholeheartedly support the district's proposal to have teachers send weekly emails to students and parents that lay out the learning objectives for the week and the assignment timelines, as well as when teachers are going to be accessible for office hours and available to provide additional targeted structured support for students that are struggling. This approach is really going to ensure that the students themselves, parents, and guardians, and educators are invested and clearly understand what's expected to help each and every student succeed and be successful. So I'm going to turn it back to Liz.
Hi, Liz Guillen again. Public Advocates and the ACLU of California sent an open letter to all school district superintendents in California to remind and explain some of the relevant educational requirements governing California public schools as this very different school year begins. That guidance is attached to the comments that we submitted today. The overarching principle is that most legal and regulatory requirements remain in place to ensure California students continue to receive their fundamental right to education during this time. And there are new requirements. Assessment and tracking of learning loss. School district plans must describe how, with what tools, and at what frequency they will assess student learning status in English Language Arts, English Language Development, and Math. There must be a clear plan for consistent and uniform tracking of student participation and work completion towards credits for high school graduation. We appreciate that the district specifically outlines this as an expectation that we should have for distance learning implementation. And we urge you to ensure this is done consistently for every student. We align ourselves with the comments submitted by our colleagues at Disability Rights California, Equal Justice Society, National Center for Youth Law, and the Western Center on Law and Poverty, which focused on the needs of students with exceptional needs, their disproportionate referral to independent study, which I understand now is being described as part of multiple pathways, student discipline, and family supports with technology. Sam spoke about access to recorded synchronous instruction. Without this, many students will face the loss of their rights to an education. This is an issue of equity, and we appreciate that it is part of the district's plan as a requirement that will be uniform throughout the district. Thank you. Keep working hard.
Ms. Sanchez, are you ready to give your comment?
I am. So my comment is, I'm providing a liaison comment for a parent who submitted comment in Spanish. Parent's name is Veronica Munoz. She provided, soy madre de familia de una estudiante de la escuela de California. Y quiero pedir que por favor nos apoyen con tutoría para los estudiantes que están en proceso de aprender inglés. Ya que es muy difícil para ellos. En mi caso, mi hijo tuvo tutoría de inglés en el séptimo grado. Le ayudó mucho, Ms. Sanchez. Para nosotros fue de mucha ayuda porque miramos al final del ciclo escolar que mejoró en sus calificaciones. Y así como mi hijo, hay muchos estudiantes que necesitan esta ayuda. Muchas gracias.
Okay, so we have a few other comments that were sent in written. And the first one is from Angie Sutherland. And her comment is, the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan is the plan the LCAP PAC and other committees gave input on. I see that district staff met with CAC, quote, "leadership," but not the full advisory committee. I hope a full committee can provide input in the future. Also, I am an appointed LCAP PAC member. When reviewing the plan, I noticed that there was nothing in the plan regarding bullying prevention and intervention. I mentioned the incomplete bullying data that was on the Public Records Act request and the inappropriateness that the motivation in bullying incidents is not being tracked, e.g., types of discrimination, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender, sexual harassment, disability, religion, et cetera. I want to thank the district for adding in information about bullying prevention as part of the plan. The next public comment is from Alina Cervantes and says, "Dear Board Members, if you are going to agree to the bare minimum standards for instructional time for our children, please ensure that those precious minutes count for something. I am of the opinion that you can have quantity and quality. But if we are being forced to choose by those that think our kids can't have it all, please make sure there are safeguards in any signed MOUs with SETA. We need clear language for what those minutes represent. My children attend a high-performing school along with the children of the SETA BP and our board member. Our kids have already Zoomed with our teachers and we have links to the Google classrooms. We will have daily live, standards-based instruction. And while we know there will be kinks to work out, we are all excited to start school. Please make sure all children in this district have equitable opportunities for learning this fall. In the past, we have signed agreements this district could not afford. Please don't make any more deals our children can't afford to pay for." And the next comment is from Manuel Guanrostro and says, "I am writing to support and reiterate the importance of some aspects of SUSD's draft Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. These include clear minimum minutes of daily synchronous instruction for all students with additional time for targeted student groups. The clear guidelines that clarify how much daily synchronous learning time will be provided for each student is critical. In addition, the plan to ensure additional time for some student groups, such as ELs and SPED students, is a must for equity. As it pertains to ELs, the clear guidelines for daily synchronous learning for ELD and doubling of time for newcomer EL students is something to be commended and protected. Ensure flexible access to lessons and materials, including recording of lessons. It is my hope that SUSD's final plan provides for the recording of lessons while also addressing the privacy concerns. This should be accomplished through guided This should be accomplished through guidelines, policy, and more conversations with teachers. However, recording of lessons is important for some students, especially those that might not be able to log in at the scheduled time and those that can benefit from the ability to revisit content. This access must be provided equitably throughout the district for all students. Ensure that all students have an adequate learning environment. One issue that is not addressed in the draft LCP, in parentheses, or maybe not as clear, is how the district will ensure that all students have a space to learn. Some students, including homeless students, might not have access to a learning environment. The district should explore solutions to ensure that students are identified for this need and then provided with access to a space to learn. For some students, this might include providing them with a desk. For others, it could be setting up a learning environment in a school facility." And the next public comment is from Junior Goris, and says, "I am writing to support and reiterate the importance of some aspects of SUSD's draft Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. These include clear minimum minutes of daily synchronous instruction for all students with additional time for targeted student groups. The clear guidelines that clarify how much daily synchronous learning time will be provided for each student is critical. In addition, the plan to ensure additional time for some students such as ELs and SPED students is a must for equity. As it pertains to ELs, the clear guidelines for daily synchronous learning for ELD and doubling of time for newcomer EL students is something to be commended and protected. Ensure flexible access to lessons and materials, including recording of lessons. It is my hope that SUSD's final plan provides for the recording of lessons while also addressing the privacy concerns. This should be accomplished through guidelines, policy, and more conversations with teachers. However, recording of lessons is important for some students, especially those that might not be able to log in at the scheduled time and those that can benefit from the ability to revisit content. This access must be provided equitably throughout the district for all students. Ensure that all students have an adequate learning environment. One issue that is not addressed in the draft LCP, or maybe not as clear, is how the district will ensure that all students have a space to learn. Some students, including homeless students, might not have access to a learning environment. The district should explore solutions to ensure that students are identified for this need and then provided with access to a space to learn. For some students, this might include providing them with a desk. For others, it could be setting up a learning environment in a school facility. Thank you for considering these suggestions, and please ensure that distance learning does not mean the lowering of access to the full curriculum for our students." The next public comment is from Martha Zaragoza Diaz, and says, "I'm a member of the Sacramento community and advocate for English learners. I thank the board and the superintendent for the opportunity to comment on the district's Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. Upon review of the LCP, I am providing the following comments and recommendations. One, regular communication from teachers and schools. I support the weekly communications to students and parents on learning goals and student progress, as well as a report of student progress. During this time of distance learning, parents and students need consistent, clear communication from teachers and administrators on learning expectations and student support opportunities to ensure the academic success of every student. It is recommended that communications to non-English-speaking parents be provided in their primary language. Two, equal access to live instruction. I support the district's plan to require recorded synchronous instruction. This is an equity issue for many students and parents. Students who are unable to participate in online learning at the same time lessons are actually given will now be able to have access to lessons and missed instruction, enabling them to complete coursework. Three, access, assessment, and tracking of learning loss. In order to address the learning loss of English learners and of other vulnerable students, the LCP must describe how and with what tools and how often will the district assess student learning status in English, English language development, and math. I applaud the district for specifically outlining this as an expectation that parents and students should have for distance learning implementation." The next comment is from Sarah Lewis, and says, "I am writing to support some of the aspects of SUSD's Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan and reiterate their importance. These include," and it looks like her comment is very much like two previous ones, but let's see. "Clear minimum minutes of daily synchronous instruction for all students with additional time for targeted student groups. The clear guidelines that clarify how much daily live synchronous learning time will be provided for each student is critical. In addition, the plan to ensure additional time for some student groups such as ELs and SPED students is a must for equity. As it pertains for ELs, the clear guidelines for daily synchronous learning for ELD and doubling of time for newcomer students is something that should be protected. Flexible access to lessons and materials, including recording of lessons." So this paragraph is the same as the one that was before. "Clear, consistent, regular communication between teachers, students, and families. Students, parents, and families need regular, clear communication from teachers and administrators on learning expectations and student support opportunities, information that was severely lacking during the crisis education students received in the spring. I am pleased that the district has developed a concrete approach for weekly communication with students and parents by teachers, as well as additional school-wide and district-wide communication strategies, such as frequent texts, emails, and robocalls with updates and resources. I strongly encourage the implementation of a weekly email from teachers that outlines the instructional schedule, learning goals, opportunities for targeted structural support for struggling students, and curriculum and assignment timelines. Providing this information in a consistent and frequent way will help set clear expectations for each partner, the students themselves, parent, family members, and educators, to effectively support every student's success." And that was the final public comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Moretti. Do we have any board member questions and comments? And I'm trying to switch the screen view so I can see everyone. Please raise your hand if you have any comments or questions on the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. Okay, Board Member Murawski, followed by Board Member Vang.
Thank you. I, just overall, I mean, I know we've talked about many of the aspects of this plan already. I just want to reiterate that I am really proud of the plan that the district has put together and all of the stakeholder input that was reflected in it. You know, a lot of what I heard from parents, hundreds of parents over the course of the summer, is reflected in this plan, particularly the live instruction. And I think that's just so critical. Like I was, you know, when I was looking at the Kinder, the Kinder minutes and thinking about, you know, when I had a Kinder, what, kind of 90 minutes of live instruction? And then 90 minutes of asynchronous instruction means for a Kinder? And comparing that to the district's plan that's in, well, it's a little bit different in here. And I guess, like, I will ask, I assume that will be updated with kind of what the final version is. But, you know, for Kinder, like 180 minutes, 140 of which are live synchronous, and 40 of which are asynchronous, that's a really big difference. And to me, one of those, one of the consequences of something like that, if you give a Kinder 90 minutes of asynchronous work, that's going to be the parent with the Kinder, if the parent is available to do that. But, I mean, I don't know otherwise how you do that. So there's a huge equity issue. I just like, I mean, a Kinder doing an hour and a half of work by themselves are only going to get that work done if a parent is able to sit with them. So that's just one example out of a lot of things that I think are really just well-crafted in this plan. And so, but I did have a couple of, I guess I'll just, I'll keep it short and just ask one. I did receive a letter from the Black Parallel School Board talking about, you know, wanting to know more about how discipline would be done through this, you know, distance learning, online environment. And so I think that's not very well articulated here and could potentially be full of landmines for our families, particularly our Black students who have traditionally been overrepresented in all kinds of disciplinary issues. So I don't know if you can, I don't know who can comment on that and, you know, whether that can be incorporated more into the, into the plan so there's some real clarity about how that's going to work.
Certainly, Member Murawski, and I'll also ask staff to join here. We are very cognizant of the issue of student discipline in this distance learning piece of our academic year. And Mr. Brown, Stefan Brown, Raul Basio, they've issued some information to our principals related to this item because we do want to make sure that we certainly have at least a calibrated approach to how we afford students' opportunities, you know, due process and such, so that we can see how to avoid those disproportionate impacts because distance learning is a very different learning modality. And I've actually addressed some of these issues very recently. So we want to make sure that we start the school year with a more calibrated approach to student discipline.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. I do want to just say and follow up to that, you know, there's some emerging research about the disproportionate impacts of distance learning for Black and Brown students and some of the implicit bias and microaggressions that can occur in a distance learning environment. And with that, you know, the Black Parallel School Board letter is one framework for discipline, but I don't think we're also talking about how we're going to measure participation in the level. I would like to ensure that there are safeguards. There are some students who are going to be more quiet than others. There are some students who are going to bounce around. Like, what is the guidance that we're going to provide to our teachers so that we are not penalizing our students unnecessarily and giving them low satisfactory or unsatisfactory marks as a result of not truly knowing how to measure what engagement looks like?
Thank you for the comments, Board Member Superintendent. We can definitely follow up with our staff and student support and health services to understand what that guidance is and then work with them to determine what portion of the plan that makes the most sense to incorporate that information. Certainly, there's probably a few places alongside of the distance learning program itself, as well as the mental health and social emotional well-being and the outreach and engagement sections where that would align and it may be something we can thread throughout or feature more prominently in one section, but we'll follow up with our colleagues.
Do we have other board member comments or questions? Board Member Vang?
Thanks, President Ryan. First, I just wanted to thank staff for your presentation and also just want to give a shout out to Renee from LCAP and Yova from D-LAC for sharing all the stakeholder input. I really appreciate your incredible work on behalf of our students and families in SAC City. I do have some comments and then just some, some questions as well. You know, as I was listening to Renee and Yova sharing the stakeholder input, I think a lot of it echo what I heard from our Area 5 listening sessions. You know, I heard loud and clear from many of our parents in South SAC, especially our Spanish and Hmong-speaking parents, that they really want consistency from, from the district, right? But what I also want to share is that aside from consistency and uniformity, what they also shared with me was that they know that there's no way that they can do this work, that they can co-teach, right? Now our parents have become co-teachers without the support of their teachers, right? And what I'm also hearing is that, you know, as a school district, we also need to do everything we can to ensure that we support our teachers so that they can do what they do best, which is teach our students. You know, I think our teachers and our parents share the same sentiment that distant learning, we got to make sure that we have similar access and content and quality across the district regarding, regardless of what school site you're at, right? And I think I heard that loud and clear, and so I do really appreciate some of the items in our distant learning plan. I think, I think we see that in the plan, and I want to thank Superintendent for that. But I do also want to emphasize that content is incredibly important. While I understand that content is incredibly important, I also want to, you know, just say as well that connection is as equally important as content, right? Both must be looked very carefully. I think I heard Renee spoke about the social-emotional piece, right? And I think that emotional support is just equally important as our academic support, especially for our English-language learners, our students with special needs, and our homeless student. I did have a few questions, and kind of similar to President Ryan, you know, I'd be interested to also know, how are we as a school district monitoring the student, our students' health, our students' social-emotional well-being during distant learning? Because I think that's a, that's a huge thing, whether that's a teacher, I mean, who's doing that piece of the monitoring of our students? That's the first question that I have. And the second question is also, you know, I think we also heard from public comments. I'd be interested to also, to learn what our district have planned in terms of support for students who need a different type of learning space where home is not conducive to learning. What is the district plan around that? Whether that's our homeless, our students who are homeless or, or students that were able to identify where they just can't learn at home, and we need to be able to create those spaces. And so if staff can speak on those things, that would be great.
Certainly, Member Vang, thank you for the questions. I will ask Ms. Bieda as our CAO and Doug Huscher, who's also on the call. As you know, coming out of the spring, we were very committed in trying our best to engage our students through a daily survey, through a daily survey in terms of their engagement level and their social, social-emotional well-being as well. We've certainly taken from, from some of those learnings. And I can have Ms. Bieda speak to how we are looking to measure engagement, as well as Mr. Harris, who spoke a little bit about this in terms of initial metrics for this distance learning start of the school year. And then Mr. Huscher, who can speak to some of the supports to our homeless and our foster youth as well. I will say that connected to the presentation from Dr. Caserier and Ms. Cowers' comments earlier, we are looking to work with community-based organizations eventually, also with our labor partners to try to figure out how to provide those in-person supports, both in partnership with our city, CBOs, but eventually as we start being given permission through SAC County Public Health to provide those supports in our own school sites.
Yeah, and Superintendent, I'd be interested also, because I know staff is going to answer the question, but as we're working with our CBOs, you know, I think we hear in terms of the qualitative stories of the great, just, you know, the work that our CBOs does in terms of that social-emotional piece. But I think for me, I would also like us as a district to be able to also just track the social-emotional of those programs because I think that's really important in terms of the CBOs that we choose and their effectiveness. That's absolutely really important for me. So I think as we think about the monitoring piece, not just within, you know, distant learning, but also in partnership with our CBOs, it's going to be important for me. I would like to also see like pre and post involvement in the CBOs in terms of how our students are feeling. And so, not sure if that's something, I'm sure the district is thinking through that process as well because I would, I think especially during this time right now, it's going to be important for us to be able to track that, whether that's distant learning or in partnership with our CBOs.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bieda, Mr. Huscher, Mr. Harris.
Member Vang, just first and foremost, thank you for caring for and thinking of our students in, in this way, and knowing that we serve a whole student and that the needs of our community is very, they're very deep. So first and foremost, I think that you mentioned the need, and you heard this in your Area 5 listening sessions, and we've heard this from our community. Live instruction, as we build relationships and connect with kids in the way that we'll be doing now in our distance learning, is very different than what happened in the spring. If we think about how we serve and also assess social-emotional learning for our students when we're together, it's those connections that teach. when we're together, it's those connections that teachers are making with kids as they watch how they're interacting during learning, as well as with each other. As we move into this space where we have more live time together, as well as those small group targeted breakout sessions that follow our content learning sessions, and that's also part of our synchronous learning time, those are the times that teachers are really doing some of the most power, so powerful social emotional assessment. They know when students show up, they know when they don't. They know when students show up and they're able to interact and they know when they don't. As they get to know kids, they know when to say, hey, you know what, we have some targeted time after, I'd like to meet with you for five minutes and just check in. Some of that is the most powerful social emotional assessment that's going to happen for our kids that will be different now in the work that we'll be doing. So I'm grateful for you pointing out that need for live instruction, grateful for our targeted support and also calling out that we need the assessment. Also in our Common Assessment Plan, we've built in times when we'll be doing real other social emotional assessments. Those are important too, in the work that we do, as we start to see, well, how does that look in comparison to who we see showing up every day and how they show up? The other piece about our interaction now is as we see students having needs, remember our schools are open. They're open very, very differently than we've been open, but they're open. All of those services and supports that we've had for kids, they're all still here. And so when a teacher sees with immediacy the need of a student on a day-to-day basis, they can connect kids immediately to those supports. So even though we're not going to be together, I'm grateful that we're returning together in these different ways and that we'll have these additional ways to be able to assess, monitor and put supports in place. So I'm really grateful that you asked and gave us the opportunity to think through some of these things.
And I would add that I think multiple checkpoints really and multiple vehicles and avenues is the answer here. So whether it's site observation, whether that's an S E L survey, and there are multiple checkpoints that might see, we'll be looking at this year in terms of S E L assessments of our students, whether it's the check-in. We know that we have the student support centers at about 30 of our sites and we just heard a, a call out for, for more of them being requested. We understand that. If a site does not have that, we do have the Connect Center. In our principal trainings that we've offered over summer, all the principals, when we had our engagement training, we reviewed early identification and intervention systems, so looking at our early warning system. And we really, we focused on vulnerable youth. We talked about who are the students here we really need to be talking about, who have been the most harmed by COVID. And so we talked about students experiencing homelessness, we talked about foster, we talked about students that were disengaged in the springtime. We really talked about how would you use our early warning system to find those kids and quickly offer interventions before school starts and, and then as soon as the school year starts. In terms of working with our CBOs, as Manpreet shared earlier tonight, we will be looking at three pilots and then to grow those number of pilots for sites where we can offer six hours a day support to some of our most vulnerable students. And that would include their instructional time, so they'd be getting support during their instruction time, which is great. And they'd be, they'd be online, of course, they would have that digital support for whatever is needed as well. Just additionally, we've used Title IV money just recently to add both social workers to our, our homeless group that's doing great work right now, as well as program associates to our foster youth support right now. And so we're really trying to dive deeply around identifying kids, making sure the support is there and quickly find kids that are struggling and make sure that they are brought back into the loop, that they are supported and that we know them by name and are in close communication with all the adult support that we can offer in the district.
Thank you so much, Mr. Huscher. Do we have other questions or comments? Mr. Harris, were you about to say something?
Well, I'll wrap up really quickly, just in terms of the concreteness. As Mr. Huscher mentioned, our early identification intervention system is set to be up and running as of today, so that's a hard data point that we'll have to, to see students. You know, two emergent data points are our traditional school climate survey. We're looking to have actually two administrations of it this school year as a way to increase getting that type of data from our students in terms of S E L data. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we have a participation rate draft that we haven't operationalized within our student information system, but that will be looking at participation in terms of class attendance in a Zoom setting, the turning in of assignments and communication. So, so in terms of kind of the hard data that we're trying to gain access to, there's a focus on obviously leveraging our P I S system, looking at participation and then obviously looking to administer our survey process more than once a year to try and get more meaningful data so we can act upon it within the same school year.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I see Board Member Garcia's hand up.
Yes, thank you. I, I just wanted to thank staff for all this work. I know that it was a very short period of time to, to develop this, this plan. And I, I do want to underscore and highlight the, the very robust, I think, stakeholder effort to, I, I hear a lot of what I, what we all heard, right, at different listening sessions in our respective trustee areas, those voices are here, as well as D-LAC, as well as, as well as LCAP. So I, I just, I just want that not to be lost because I think it is a very well-rounded plan. It is long, I have to say that, but, but I think the, the overall sentiment is that it's very equity-focused. So I just, I just wanted to, to share that because I know a lot of really hard work went into this plan. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Board Member Garcia. Do we have any other board member comments or questions? I want to just appreciate the many voices from the civil rights community, both local and statewide, that came out to speak on behalf of this plan this evening. I don't think that we can underscore enough the importance of getting this right and the equity implications if we get this wrong. And I do want to thank the parents, the families and the many stakeholder meetings that we held, as well as listening sessions with district trustees. I appreciate that the staff listened, that you incorporated the feedback into this plan. I will tell you, I've heard from parents who have been in tears because they're trying to figure out how they're going to be able to provide any sort of meaningful support and instruction for their kids while they're working multiple jobs and in a one-bedroom apartment with several children, trying to find a space to be able to do distance learning. And so this idea of having the right blend of live instruction with targeted support, but also recorded lessons that are available for a student to access when it's convenient and when they can have support of whoever their familial individuals are in the household that can provide that additional set of hands and helping expertise. I do also want to just say, you know, one community member said to me that both his mother and his grandmother had contracted COVID and had it not been for the fact that he was able to access online classes and lessons that had been recorded, he would have fallen out of post-secondary education. This was someone in Oak Park. And I think you just apply that to the families we have in our community that are not just grappling with trying to stay employed and feed their children, but also illness in this global pandemic. And, and we just have to do more to make sure that we're removing barriers to access. So I want to appreciate the efforts of the staff and all of the community voices who have contributed. And I'm hopeful that this will be a real guidepost for the work that we do moving forward.
President Ryan, if I can just also echo what board members have indicated in terms of their appreciation of the many stakeholders and voices. Ms. Webster Hawkins mentioned something to the effect that she'd hoped that some of the reflections and comments from the LCAP PAC were used for our return to learn plan. Of course, that is absolutely accurate. I will continue to say and, and often say to my counterparts that I think SAC City has some of the best advisory committees in the state, whether it's the LCAP PAC, D-LAC, C A C, African-American Advisory Board. I am grateful to the countless individuals who spend many, many hours focused on improving student outcomes in SAC City. They push, they push back, they are advocates of our students and we will continue to work closely with them as partners. So again, thank you to everybody who's contributed to this and of course to our team led by Mr. Harris and Mr. Ramir Fong as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. So we are going to go ahead and this is just an informational item. No action is necessary at this time. We're going to go ahead and move on to item 10.0, communications. We'll begin with our employee organizational reports. Our first organizational report is S C T A, who has up to 15 minutes allotted per their contract to provide comment.
We have a message from David Fisher reporting on S C T A and it says, "Good evening. I'm David Fisher, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. I'm also a second grade teacher and the parent of recent SAC City graduate, as well as a current SAC City High School student. The start of the school year as a parent and teacher always brings with it a sense of excitement with the hope of a new year of possibilities. This year, however..." Excuse me, "this year, however, it is different. Rather than excitement, many teachers feel anxiety. Some of that anxiety is understandable. A national political leadership working to heighten tension and chaos rather than calm fears. The murder of African-Americans by police officers across the country. An international pandemic that has already taken nearly 200,000 American lives and has devastated the economy. The 900 wildfires burning throughout California. And then there's distance learning. During this pandemic and through the district's proposed district, distance learning plan, we are deeply concerned that the equity gap in SAC City will widen. Over the weekend and through Monday, our 85-person bargaining team met with the district for over 30 hours in an effort to reach an agreement on the district's distance learning plan. Our proposal, which was developed, developed by more than 200 frontline educators with the additional input from more than 1,000 more of their colleagues emphasizes the importance of relying on the professional judgment of teachers to meet the educational needs of students. Unfortunately, it was completely ignored by the district's bargaining team, rejecting the input and experience of some of the most dedicated educators in the region, if not the state. SAC City teachers are united in their belief that the district learning program proposed by the district that stresses the quantity of screen time over the quality of learning with rigid and flexible schedules will only serve to create a demoralizing learning environment that will put hard-to-reach students even further behind their peers when classes resume in person. Internet connectivity is a serious issue in many of Sacramento's most impoverished neighborhoods. In SAC City, many of our students will have to leave their homes to access internet spots, including city school buses parked in lots while braving temperatures that continue to soar, soar above 100 degrees. Sacramento isn't a special case. A photo of two Salinas, California elementary students studying on the curbside of a Taco Bell went viral on social media and national broadcast television during the first week of the month. We now understand that several schools have run out of Chromebooks, further worsening the problem. In addition to the digital divide that challenges, in, in addition to the digital divide challenges faced by those just starting school during the COVID crisis, many older students will have to work to help support their families during this time of economic hardship. Other students are living in tight quarters or are forced to share devices and connections with siblings and parents. It is critical that teachers are given the flexibility and support to do what they have been trained to do, teach. The public health and educational challenges we face during the pandemic are constantly changing. It makes no sense for districts to be rigid. The quote, "more is better" approach unquote emphasized by the Sacramento City Unified School District dismisses the importance of the professional judgment of teachers in the educational process. A good teacher is like a doctor. They prescribe remedies based on experience and best practices and if the first approach doesn't work, they try a different remedy. As teachers, we, rather than administrators in the central office building, are in best, are in the best position to assess and address the ongoing educational needs of our students. For those students who need additional intervention and support, we can adjust our teaching to accommodate our instruction to provide the differentiated instruction our students deserve. The district's proposal does not allow for teachers to exercise this flexibility and professional judgment. During one recent bargaining meeting with the Sacramento Unified School District this weekend, one of the teachers on our bargaining team, an elementary school teacher with 24 years of experience, put it this way. "It's like a patient whose doctor recommends one milligram daily of vitamin C decides that if one milligram is good, maybe 10 milligrams would be better. And it's important here to identify what is and what is not in dispute. The length of the teacher's workday is not in dispute. Teacher pay is not in dispute. The use of Google classrooms as the district instructional platform is not in dispute. How distance learning is defined is not in dispute. The need for teachers to collaborate with their colleagues is not in dispute. So what then are the major sticking points? One, the minimum number of minutes required for live screen time instruction. Unlike other surrounding districts where those minutes are either left entirely to the discretion of teachers or are closely, or are closer to the standards recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics and the World Health Organization, S C U S D is demanding a quote, "more is better" unquote excessive number of required screen time instruction. Two, services for students who are unable to participate in regularly scheduled distance learning. S C U S D is demanding an impractical, one-size-fits-all approach. According to S C U S D's demand, teachers will record their lessons for students to access at some unspecified time, potentially with no additional support. In contrast, S C T A is proposing multiple pathways, including independent study, district-sponsored homeschool, additional tutoring, alternative work schedules for some teachers, additional staff who can provide individualized targeted support, teacher-created grade-level website-based instruction. Three, special education. Special education teachers are drowning under the increased volume of paperwork. With distance learning, the district now faces making changes to 7,000 I E Ps in the beginning of 2020 to 2021 alone. Rather than provide any additional administrative or clerical support that district administrators acknowledged was necessary during our two-work group meeting, the district ignored that commitment and simply proposes to continue to pile that work on teachers with no relief and no solution. As a result, special education teachers will be taken away from providing valuable instruction in order to focus on paperwork that could be handled by district administrators. Four, split classes. By contrast, the district is obligated to make every effort to avoid split classes. Split classes are never a good option in a distance learning environment, even less so. Fortunately, the California Public Employment Relations Board has agreed with teachers that our bargaining, that our bargaining is at impasse. That means that we now will be joined in our discussions by mediators appointed by the state of California to help us bridge our differences. We hope to be in mediation as soon as tomorrow with the hope of reaching a mutually agreeable solution by the time classes resume on Tuesday. In a brick and mortar setting, classroom teachers are empowered, are empowered to use their professional judgment to educate students consistent with the board-adopted curriculum. Distance learning should not be any different. And here, the recent comments from an assistant superintendent in neighboring Folsom-Cordova, quote, "who placed his full faith in teachers," unquote, are worth noting. Quote, "Teachers are the educational experts. They went through a lot of training, a lot of college and a lot of credentialing classes on how to engage kids and help them with their learning," unquote. There is no reason such respect for teachers should not apply here in SAC City as well. And that is the last report for 10.1.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moretti. Item 10.2, district advisory committees. Do we have reports tonight from the community advisory committee?
We do not have a report for community advisory committee. We have a report from D-LAC and...
We have a report from D-LAC and from the LCAP PAC and for Student Advisory Council.
Wonderful. We're very excited to be adding the Student Advisory Council report to this evening's district advisory committees. Thank you, Board Member Sheik, for your leadership there. Okay, our first report?
D-LAC sent in a written report and it says, "Good evening, President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar and Board members. D-LAC would like to thank you for your time. It has come to D-LAC's attention that our most vulnerable students are not receiving the support."
D-LAC would like to read comment if we can.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar and Board members. D-LAC would like to thank you for your time. Sacramento City Unified proclaims equity and how every student must be given the opportunity to succeed. However, it has come to D-LAC's attention that our most vulnerable students are still not receiving the support they need to succeed. This is disappointing information. This is especially true concerning long-term English learners, English learner students. A protected class of students with state and federal oversight. Students near English language proficiency are denied increase for improved academic support to achieve grade level proficiency in ELA to reclassify. When support is advocated for them, there is silence. This will continue to be an issue as long as members of this board do not hold their areas accountable. Currently, LTALs comprise 13.2% of SAC City's overall enrollment. Burn Bacon Middle School has the highest density of LTAL middle school students at 24.9%, followed by California Middle School at 23.6%. Leana Sanchez is a teacher at Cal and Vice President of D-LAC. The original master schedule at Cal included LTAL support to provide priority academic and SEL services to accelerate reclassification while developing individual and collective academic identities and honoring student heritage, language and culture. Though Principal Haley and Susan Wu confirmed fourth period LTAL support to seventh grade students while creating contact tracing cohorts, none of the seven tracks for seventh grade maintain an elective block during fourth period. If students are not on a contact tracing track, they are at higher risk of exposure to COVID-19 than their peers. Since this course is funded through SIPS using EL supplemental funds, Ms. Sanchez urged Mr. Haley to consider zero period LTAL support. This would allow to stay cohorted to prioritize contact tracing safety measures and ensure communication and collaboration across content areas with cohorted teachers. Mr. Haley responded, "We are not doing any zero periods during this time of distance learning." Together with D-LAC council, we advocated to Mr. Haley, multilingual coordinator Azarelinguas, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction Matt Turkey and Chief Academic Officer Christine Bieda to supplement, not supplant, as English learners are entitled to. They should not have to forfeit their elective to receive academic support for reclassification, especially during physical distancing due to COVID-19. Imagine our surprise to find out that students in gifted and talented education are receiving zero period academic intervention while also preserving their elective. Evidently, decision making pertaining to LTAL and GATE students is highly inequitable at Cal. Additionally, instructional area superintendent Shad Schweitzer had been CC'd and has not intervened. If a teacher on D-LAC council is unable to receive site and district support to attend to the specific needs of long-term English learners, it is no wonder that the district's LTAL population continues to grow and that this, in fact, not a true priority of the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Superintendent, I just, given D-LAC's report, is it possible? Because I don't know what's going on, but I just have some grave concern regarding some of the, the comments made from D-LAC and want to make sure that that's actually addressed. If you or staff can follow up on that, I would like to be CC'd and if possible, Member Garcia, as well as the liaison for D-LAC to make sure, so that I have a better understanding of the actual issue and to make sure that we address what D-LAC has brought to the board.
Of course, absolutely, Member Bang. I will follow up with our team on that.
Thank you.
Our next organizational report from the district advisory committees?
President Ryan, we have a few public comments regarding item 10.2 for D-LAC.
Great.
This one is from public comment from D-LAC Community. It's from Valeria Lopez Lozana. And she says, "I think Ms. Sanchez's class will be very beneficial for me and other students because it's helping us understand more about the topics we are being taught. Personally, from my experience, I've had trouble understanding what the teacher says or does. I feel like having Ms. Sanchez there would be such a game changer. Overall, I think it's a very good class to have for kids who don't really understand what the teacher is saying or maybe going too fast. Also, from personal experience, homework is really hard for me because if I didn't understand what the teacher was saying, then I would also have trouble answering the questions on the homework. I feel like having Ms. Sanchez there can de-stress students and make it fun in the process, which would make school a lot more fun and a lot less stressful. Besides personally, when I had a test, I'd be so paranoid and scared because I didn't get a topic that my teacher said and I might get a question on the test for something I really didn't understand. Why I think she'll help, Ms. Sanchez would go over the topic with me and help me understand better. Thank you." And the next comment, that was from a student, and the next comment is from a parent, Guadalupe Ramirez. And she says, "We want your help and we'll do whatever it takes to host Ms. Sanchez's class." And then we have a comment from Junior Goris and says, "Good evening Superintendent and Board members. As a member of D-LAC and a parent organizer at MLK, I respectfully request that we do not focus, that we do not lose focus on finding a director for the district's multilingual literacy department. My 47 EL students at my site need a captain for the EL ship. Thank you again for your labor." And the next comment is from Alma Lopez. And it says, "D-LAC for support. My comment is in full support of the push and model proposed for our long-term English learner students at California Middle School. On December of last year, I had the opportunity to chaperone Ms. Sanchez's seventh grade class on a field trip to the Chicano Research Center, an interactive bilingual library that includes a museum and oral history project specific to Mexican-American Chicano history located in Stockton, California. I know this experience built on the students' positive identities. As they made connections to their history, heard from bilingual guest speakers such as Richard Soto, the founder of the Chicano Research Center, broke bread with traditional food, experienced a walking tour of the murals in the city that depict the strengths and values of the Latino community and learned about how community comes together during Tradiciones de Sembranas. On our way back to Sacramento, the students expressed gratitude and excitement for their experience that day. From my interactions with the students and as an EL myself, I am in full support of the push-in model versus a designated class for the following reasons. Our students are bilingual and know English language. They're not lacking language. However, a monolingual and fractional view of bilingualism leads to overly simplistic notions of languages simply being added or subtracted from the mind of the bilingual, closely associating it with language as a problem orientation, hence leading to the insistence on strict separation of the students' languages. Rather than highlight an apparent deficit in language development, the more equitable and positive approach is to emphasize that under the right conditions, students are capable of developing high levels of competence in a standardized language variety and to locate the causes such as the type of language tests used or material deprivation, but not language in itself. The next comment is from Alison Franco Jimenez and says, "Ms. Sanchez helped us a lot in seventh grade. Without her, my grades would have been really low. She helped us understand our homework and understand our classes when we didn't know what the teachers wanted us to do. Ms. Sanchez made sure I turned in my homework. She would make sure I would do assignments I forgot to do or didn't do. She would also make us study so we wouldn't get a low score on our test. She would also teach us things that have happened or are happening in this world when we finished our assignments. Thanks to her, my grades went up." And the next comment is from Marisol Ramirez. And she says, "I am very sorry. I think Ms. Sanchez could have helped the class, especially with all of this happening. It is a shame that they did not want to offer the class to the students. Thank you very much." And Humberto Toledo says, "What a bad news about the California class. We did want the help. We still don't know the schedule yet." And that was.
I have public comment as well.
Okay.
Is that okay? Is it okay to share?
You have a comment?
I have two student and two parent comments. May I share? Leana, were they submitted? They were submitted for live comment for me as liaison to read for them, if that's okay?
Yeah, no problem. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So the first comment is from student Azul Solorio. Her comment is, "This class helped me a lot last year. Ms. Sanchez made it easier for me in ELA and math because of how she teaches. I love the field trips that we went on. It taught me a lot about my history and culture." Next comment is from a parent named Fanny Castellanos. Her comment is in Spanish. Buenas tardes, a quien le interese. Les escribo estas palabras para hablar de mi experiencia con la clase de la maestra Sanchez. Fue una de mis favoritas el año pasado. Ella fue motivación de mi hijo. Ella estaba pendiente de mi hijo para que él pudiera mejorar su nivel académico. Cualquier cosa que no entendiera me ayudó, ya sea en clase o emocionalmente. También agrego que la maestra Sanchez me ha ayudado. A mí como mamá ha sido un gran apoyo emocional. Mi hija está en el quinto grado. Ser cerca el momento de que ella vaya a la escuela secundaria y me emociona pensar que la maestra Sanchez puede ser de sus maestras." I'm sorry, I get particularly emotional with that parent. The third comment is from a student named Valeria Lopez Lozano. She said, "I think Ms. Sanchez's class will be very beneficial for me and other students." And I'm not sure, Anne, if this one was read aloud by you, but interrupt me if it was. "I think Ms. Sanchez's class will be very beneficial for me and other students because it's helping us understand more about the topics we are being taught. Personally, from my experience, I've had trouble understanding what the teacher says or does. I feel like having Ms. Sanchez there would be such a game changer. Overall, I think it's a very good class to have for kids who don't really understand what the teacher is saying or maybe going too fast. Also, from personal experience, homework is really hard for me because if I don't understand what the teacher was saying, then I would also have trouble answering the emotions." Sorry, I'm still feeling emotional from the last parent. "Answering the questions on the homework. I feel like having Ms. Sanchez there can de-stress students and make it fun in the process, which would make school a lot more fun and a lot less stressful. Because personally, when I had a test, I'll be so paranoid and scared because I didn't get a topic that my teacher said and I might get a question on the test for something I really didn't understand. Why I think she'll help, Ms. Sanchez would go over the topic with me and help me understand better." And then the last comment, the fourth comment that I'm sharing as liaison is from parent Guadalupe Ramirez and she said, "Queremos de su ayuda y haremos lo que sea para recibir la clase de maestra Sanchez." Thank you to the students and parents and thank you, Leana, for reading on behalf of us. So are there any more?
Yes, we have, moving on to LCAP PAC. We have a report from LaShawna Brazil. And she says, "The LCAP PAC has continued to meet virtually throughout the summer. We had a closing meeting in June and have met twice in August to review the learning continuity and attendance plan draft. Much of our recent discussion has focused on the needs to address the disproportionate impacts of COVID and school closures on student groups in our district that were already experiencing disproportionate outcomes. We see the current situation as both a challenge and opportunity to disrupt the status quo. We should be taking this time to consider how we can do things differently and what measures can be taken to provide all students and especially those students who are in most need with increased and improved access opportunities and outcomes. Recent discussions have highlighted the need to provide wraparound services for our most vulnerable students. One idea explored was the designation of a liaison to students and families to conduct regular check-ins and ensure that connections are made to resources and support. It is also recommended that a personalized educational plan is crafted for all students and for all students that are falling behind in our district. This educational plan will especially be a tool to support our African-American scholars and their families as well for educational success. Resources such as, as a parent liaison to each of these families should be assigned, i.e. an educational aid. The role of the liaison is to make sure the scholar has all resources, internet, working laptops, tech support, adequate workspace, as well as other basic needs the district will provide to these families. This parent liaison will also check in with their assigned families on a frequent basis to monitor scholar, teacher and parent interaction. This monitoring can be used as data to help support the success of each scholar and serve as an attendance tool as well. As was presented by the PAC at the end of last year, coherence and consistency in program implementation remain top priorities. The PAC continues to express concerns that implementation will continue to vary site by site, classroom by classroom, and that this will not result in equitable outcomes. With the board's extension of member terms throughout, through the current year, we are looking forward to building upon our work last year and hit the ground running for the development of our next three-year LCAP. During the 2020-21 school year, we are looking forward to strengthening our collaboration with other district leadership groups and broadening our engagement of the community." And the, and the comment on LCAP PAC is from Arthur Allerman and says, "To the district board, my concern is this. According to the state LCAP, every school site must have an ELAC committee to represent ELs where there is a need. On paper, meetings do take place. Principals will usually get some parent to sign off on meetings taking place. Yet there is no accountability from the district to make sure this is happening. Same goes with school site councils. I have voiced this concern to the board before with no positive results. Below are key points that support my position. One, meeting times are held either during school hours or right after school, which eliminates the working parent. Two, qualified translators are seldom available. Three, families of English learners are not having learning sessions/training. Four, the percentage of teachers, the percent of teachers do not represent the student population in most lower socioeconomic areas. Five, not enough teaching time is allocated for ELs. Thank you for the opportunity to voice concerns." And the last group to report is Student Advisory Committee. And we have two students online, Juliana Crominas and Abby Morioka available to speak.
President Ryan, can I just interject? And just defer a little bit to Member Minnick here because this is a new organizational report that was brought to our attention from our Student Advisory Council. And I think that this will be the first report that they deliver and, and hope that we will continue to do this at their request as well, Member Minnick.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I wish I could take credit for this, but Member Sheik brought this up after our last meeting, that the need for increased student voice at the meeting. And to have this as a standing agenda item will allow them, the Student Advisory Council, to be able to kind of inform us on the work that they're doing and, and kind of the, what they're hearing from their, from their colleagues. So I'm really excited to have them have this spot on the agenda moving forward.
I'm sorry that we've kept you so late into the night, but we're really looking forward to hearing your comments.
All good. Thank you so much, Board members. I'm Abby Morioka. I attend West Campus.
My name is Juliana and I attend New Tech.
And then with this presentation, we have received a lot of feedback from students about their first day of school and the return together program. The main subject of feedback that we have gotten is in terms of synchronous and asynchronous class time. The, the feedback that we have gotten is that the 30 minutes of synchronous class time, it limits Zoom time, but is effective for teachers to be able to get what they need done and is enough for students to engage with others. But we have also gotten. Um, but we have also gotten feedback that there needs to be more asynchronous time for students who cannot be on Zoom all day and office hours for those who may need it.
Um, yeah, so like Abby was saying, we need more asynchronous time. Um, is the feedback that we're receiving from students the most? Um, because there are a lot of students that are working part-time or stuff like that. They can't be on Zoom all day long, and also it's kind of draining. I'm sure, um, you board members have seen that just by being on Zoom all day. Um, but we also need, um, something that a lot of students need is availability of curriculum um, from teachers when they can't be on Zoom classes, whether that be recording lectures or just posting class materials, um, so that students can access what they need to access, um, on other times of the day besides just when, uh, teachers are on Zoom. Um, and also, a lot of students were suggesting office hours where they can go online on Zoom and, um, ask their teachers for help if they need it. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, another main subject of concern is the topic of communication. Um, we in SAC have been talking a lot about, um, having, uh, or like needing teachers to communicate effectively with students and also to possibly create some sort of, uh, forum for teacher accountability. Uh, because in a very unprecedented time, there is no like assurance that teachers are communicating effectively or doing, uh, their jobs to the fullest, um, to the fullest extent since we're not in person. Um, we've been working on a teacher accountability plan. We have no, um, like, specific detailed plan yet, but we think that teacher accountability is extremely important. Um, yeah, and then Juliana, do you want to talk about, um?
Yeah, yeah, um. So another issue that we were seeing in the class schedules was that students don't have enough time to get food. Um, this is extremely problematic with students who need to go out to school sites um, in order to receive their food because their schedules collide with the only times of the day that they can receive food from these school sites, um, which means that a lot of students are going without food. Um, for, I mean, for at least the entire school day, if not longer than that. Um. And so I think one thing that New Tech has done, because we've been doing online learning since August tenth now. We've been here for a few weeks and been able to work out the kinks, is, um, my, is New Tech has been able to provide students within one hour lunch break so that they can go out to school sites or whatever they need to do, whether that be make food, go out somewhere, um, to make, to get food so that they can eat and ensure that their students are, um, getting proper nutrition throughout the day. Um, so what they've done is pushed back the school schedule by only an hour. Um, actually, only half an hour so that, um, students can, I mean, have a, a lunch break. Um, so I think that that's something that really should have been taken into consideration, and I think that schools, um, should really, um, think about pushing their schedules or accommodating for students who can't, um, can no longer go out and get food, um, from school sites or anything like that between school, um, beca- between classes because, um, passing periods, um, on this new schedule that's come out are only between like five to ten minutes long. It doesn't allow for students to get their food.
Thank you, Juliana and Abby. Great insights. And if you want to share any of your feedback in writing, we would love to see those comments, although I took good notes, and I think most of us were also taking notes.
Yeah, uh, we have Google Docs that we create, um, for every SAC meeting that we'd be willing to share with the board for free, or for like further feedback.
Wonderful. Thank you. We really appreciate your feedback and the effort that you've put into tonight's presentation. Item ten point three, the superintendent's report.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, President Ryan, and I know that, um, it's getting late. We still have an agenda item uh, to go, uh, for this board meeting, but I do want to, um, just make a few comments. Uh, first, I want to address an issue that we learned about this afternoon. Um, and that is that our families received the letter from, uh, the district containing an enrollment verification form to obtain school meals along with our annual LCFF income survey. Uh, and I want to own, uh, that during the mailing process of, of these, uh, letters, a mail merge occurred or an error occurred and did not match the student record with the address and the name of each recipient. Uh, and I want to just express how deeply, uh, regretful we are of this oversight and apologize to all of our students and families that were involved in this, um, error, um, as, as superintendent. Um, certainly, I intend to unpack and communicate the steps that we will take to ensure that this doesn't happen again. Uh, and this, this applies even as we experience, uh, some COVID-related staffing challenges uh, in our effort to protect staff and our community's health and safety. Uh, this is certainly not an excuse, uh, to our community. Um, it is a reality of our current working environment. I do want to make sure that, um, our community knows that, um, student information which was sent in the letter cannot be used to access student materials or records, uh, in person or online, uh, and that our students' personal information is secure and it's protected. Um, I also want to just acknowledge, of course, um, that, uh, today, uh, was the first day of the 2021 academic year. It also fell on a school board meeting, um, and I know that, um, uh, staff, our board, um, have done a lot of work, uh, as well as our community, um, uh, to launch, um, a successful school year. Um, I've seen pictures of parents taking, uh, photos, um, different types of photos, of course, um, because we are in distance learning. Um, but today is still a happy, uh, day for all of us, as, uh, many of our students are all, hopefully, all of our students reunited uh, with their peers for the first time in a long time. Uh, we did, uh, start, uh, the year in distance learning, um, and, uh, our students are seeing each other through, um, Google Classroom, uh, and through Zoom as well. Um, and again, I, I want to acknowledge, um, when it rains, it pours. Um, but as I am reminded in Spanish, no hay mal que por bien no venga. Um, we did, uh, start the day with a technical glitch, uh, where our, um, student information system um, did not, uh, connect properly and seamlessly, uh, with, uh, Google Classroom around, uh, class schedules and class rosters. Um, we know that there have been technical issues, um, that, um, have become common as school districts were starting their academic year, uh, with Zoom and other things. Um, of course, as superintendent, I had hoped that, uh, we, uh, would not have any of those issues. Um, but that was not the case today. Um, and I do want to, uh, thank everyone who very quickly adapted, um, on the spot. Um, particularly our teachers, our principals, uh, other school site and district white staff who reacted very quickly and began populating, uh, information so that our students could sign onto class. Um, and while many of our families didn't, uh, may have not realized that anything was wrong, um, because, um, uh, they were able to log on successfully, I do, uh, apologize for any inconvenience uh, and anxieties that were caused by this issue. Um, I also know that, um, there is a lot of anxiety among our parents, um, that this school year, um, is different, uh, than any before. Um, and the extra anxiety, um, around the recent news that uh, negotiations on an agreement for distance learning, uh, have stalled. Um, as, uh, you may have learned, um, our, our teachers' union declared impasse because they felt that they could no longer continue attempting to reach agreement with us through the negotiations process. We were hopeful that we could remain at the table until a plan was reached, but, um, we just couldn't accept, um, uh, uh, the proposal as it stood. Um, I, I want to just make sure that, um, I talk about what impasse means and what it doesn't mean. Uh, impasse does not mean that our students will not receive instruction as required by law during the 2021 academic year, uh, whether that's through distance learning or, um, in physical classroom space whenever we come together. Um, our students and families, um, and, and this is a question that Member Garcia raised earlier, uh, should expect on Tuesday to continue participating in distance learning, and we will be communicating with our families, uh, very soon. Um, we, as a district, have worked very hard to provide our students and teachers with the necessary tools and information to engage and thrive in a distance learning environment, which is very unique, and it's new for all of us. Um, I'm very proud, um, and you heard this earlier today, um, that we have, uh, done everything we can to close the digital divide, um, in our city. We've handed out nearly twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand computers. Um, and we continue to offer students, um, and their families six months of free internet through, uh, Sac City Connect, and we will continue to engage, um, with, um, the city of Sacramento, um, Xfinity as our partners to see how we might expand that timeline. Uh, I also want to just mention that we continue to offer nutritional support. We're coming up to three million meals served since our school buildings were closed, uh, which is an amazing feat, but also speaks to the, uh, incredible impact uh, that, uh, this pandemic has had on our community. Um, um, and finally, um, we will continue to listen, uh, to our community. Uh, you heard that in tonight's presentation of our LCA plan, um, about their needs and the resources that would be helpful for them. Uh, we've created a wonderful digital backpack that you heard about earlier today. Webinars, um, uh, information in a variety of languages through our distance learning webpage, which you can find, and just a reminder, it is at learn dot S C U S D dot E D U. Um, this week, our teachers have participated in professional development learning. Um, and, um, we hope to finish, uh, a successful, uh, first week of school. Um, and we will continue to remain committed to, uh, being able to provide, uh, support, uh, to as many families as possible and as many languages as possible as, as well. We've, uh, created a more streamlined approach for families to gain access and support through a mainline phone number that's on our website. And of course, I just want to thank, um, and recognize that, um, some of these accomplishments, um, um, could not have happened without coming together with our community, uh, through their feedback, their criticisms, um, pushing and pushing back. Uh, I can't thank, uh, our community enough for their advocacy, uh, their time, uh, and their dedication, of course, to, um, our students' academic, social, and emotional success.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. Item ten point four, President's Report. Um, I wanted to share that late last night, I had the opportunity to communicate online with a couple teachers. It's actually twelve-thirty in the morning, and they were joking that we were all up. They were up because they were jittery with anticipation and excitement for their first day of school. And I was up, um, preparing for my children's first day of third grade and fifth grade. And one of the things that one of the teachers said that I thought was so, um, you know, heartwarming and poignant was that she was extremely excited about the start of the school year, even though she hated the COVID context. But she was also feeling very empty and missing the basic things that she had taken for granted. She said she missed the smell of pencils. She said she missed the smell of markers. She missed getting to see kids in their first day best dressed outfits and with a new haircut. And there are things that I didn't think about, um, and realized, you know, as our teachers are preparing for this new way of teaching and learning, they're also preparing for this new way of connecting with our children. What was incredibly encouraging to me this morning as my son navigated his third grade class and my daughter navigated her fifth grade class is that I think in the short period of time that they had with their teachers, they were able to connect. And they were so happy to get to be in that space with friends and faces that they knew from their school community. And so though it wasn't, um, what they anticipated and wasn't anything like what they had experienced on the first day of school in years past, it was a good day for them. And I say that because I think many of us are disappointed, many of us are fearful, many of us are uncertain. I think our teachers are doing a Herculean task of trying to support our students in reaching their full potential. And I think we can't lose hope that we will get there together despite this challenge that we have before us in COVID. I also want to say that I'm grateful for all of the ways that our community partners are stepping up to fill the gaps that our children and our school communities are experiencing. Earlier this week and last week, I had the chance to deliver hundreds of backpacks to some of our highest poverty schools, backpacks that were donated by CASBO. Um, you know, their unfortunate cancellation of a conference led to the ability for them to donate hundreds of backpacks to low-income students at our schools and notebooks and water bottles so that students had a chance to be excited about, you know, getting to, um, fill their backpack for their first day of school, even if it wasn't going to be in person. I want to just, um, end by thanking everyone from the Serna staff to our principals um, for everything that they've done throughout the summer to prepare. I don't think it's realistic to ever believe that school starts the week that we come back. I think that for so many of our dedicated educators and team, this has been what has been occupying the space in their brains for weeks and months in anticipation of coming back and needing to be able to meet the needs of students in a way that they had never anticipated before. And I think we're seeing, um, today, despite the technology challenges, everyone rolled up their sleeves, jumped in and made it work. And most of the comments I've heard have been incredibly positive. So thank you to our families and students for your grace, but thank you to our teachers and our principals and our staff for, you know, meeting this challenge head-on. Item ten point.
Right.
Oh.
Yes. President Ryan, the time is ten thirty-four. We need to extend the meeting, so I'll move to extend the meeting till eleven thirty.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Do we have a?
Hopefully, we don't need that much time, but.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, item ten point five, the student board member report.
Good evening, everybody. Um, thank you, President Ryan, and thank you, Superintendent Aguilar, for striking that optimistic note in your remarks tonight. I'm afraid I'm gonna fall a little bit short, but it's fine. Um, I wanted to start off by commending my colleague Sara Farage of JFK for leading the Student Advisory Council in publishing this excellent newsletter this week with really great information leading into the school year, um, Zoom setup, COVID etiquette, services that the district is providing. Um, this should have already been sent out to students, and we're working on getting a webpage where this and future editions can be easily found. And I think it's gonna be a really good thing, uh, throughout this year. Um, I also wanted to thank Abby and Juliana for taking the time to present on behalf of the SAC. Um, tonight, on that note, I wanted to thank, um, thanks to board, uh, Member Minnick for helping me for including a spot on the agenda for the Student Advisory Council. Um, hopefully, on every communications portion of our agenda so that we can see an improvement in the direction towards elevating student voice, and I'm really happy to see that. As we're all aware, today was the first day of school, usually this day is marked by grabbing that beautifully organized backpack that President Ryan was talking about. Um, it's not messy yet because you haven't started school. Taking photos outside of school, walking through those halls, reconnecting with people you haven't seen in months, making new friends. As a result of the situation wherein students get, didn't get any of that in the normal way. Um, and that's not anyone's fault. But let's be honest, all the challenges that students and parents face today and will continue to face for the foreseeable foreseeable future are not the direct result of a pandemic. The fact that students don't have any idea of what their schedules will be is not caused by a virus. Students that want to work to support their families can't tell their employers when they can work. Students with health needs can't tell their doctors or therapists when they can schedule appointments. I think it's important to state the obvious. Students and families can't afford to be on standby until the people in charge of how schooling will go on either side of the equation can get their act together. A student posed it to me like this this week. We already saw a lot of students suffering from a lack of motivation and trouble accomplishing work from home last semester. How can this district expect those students to get down to work if there's no proper coordination from above? I've heard from students that told me about their English language learner friends, who not only have received inadequate information leading up to this unprecedented school year, but I've heard of ELL students at specific schools being paired with other students for assistance that didn't even know their language. I try to be he optimistic and professional with addresses like this, but it's also my job to try and present the voice of my fellow students at these meetings. They don't feel particularly optimistic or happy with how we're starting this year. It isn't news to anyone's ears that the students and families we aim to serve are frustrated. I think we get numbed to that word frustrated. I mean, I've heard it a hundred times this meeting. But it really sums up how students feel going into this week after Labor Day with no idea what's going on. I know that depending on who you talk to, there's a different narrative on what's been happening between SCTA and SDSC, and there's a lot of politics and. and there's a lot of politics and argumentation, but this should be embarrassing for both parties. Families are leaving this district over this, and it isn't just a matter of power and negotiation games. My last Student Board Member report expressed the failures of last semester and optimism that we could learn from them. I don't know if we have. And I say this with full recognition that our staff is doing an amazing job, but there's so many places where we're falling short leading students into this semester. But back to the first day of school, as our SAC members discussed, we've gotten to talk to a bunch of students. Some students had actually a really good, positive experience where the biggest problem was just awkwardness in a virtual classroom. I want to thank teachers, staff, principals for all the work they've put in throughout the summer and the weeks leading up. It's not easy, but we also saw a lot of problems. The technical difficulties we've discussed already were really tough for a lot of people going into their first day in this unprecedented year. So there was that. A lot of students also saw a lack of communication from teachers ahead of time. Lots of last-minute changes, too many people in a class by mistake. One student at Hiram told me how she wasn't able to get into any of her classes, probably as a result of this technical difficulty. And then even when she called the school, there wasn't assistance to the point of letting her get into those classes. So she basically missed her first day of school. And I think that's really unfortunate. I also heard from a parent leading up to today concerned about a lack of information about what we're doing around internet access. And I think after today's board meeting, I see that we're doing a lot of work, but perhaps we're falling short on letting parents know. A lot of parents aren't instinctively heading to the website. And so I think there's a lot more we could do around communication. There's a lot of specific issues. I would go more into the specific internet issue, but it's been a long night. But there's a lot of specific issues like that one that are a matter of equity and making sure that students are able to learn from home. And yet bigger things when school started, schedules don't exist for so many of our students. And to return to that word, we're really frustrated. So I hope that we have productive results out of the mediation that we're heading into. Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Student Board Member Shayk. We appreciate your candor, even when it's challenging. Item ten point six, information sharing by board members. Do we have any board members who would like to share tonight? Board Member Pritchett, then Board Member Vang.
Thank you, President Ryan. I want to take a moment and welcome back our students and staff to the first day of school. Student Member Shayk is right. I wish I could say this with excitement. But now, but know that today has not been easy for most, if not all of us. I've spoken with many parents today and have helped them navigate through the system, trying to get their students online. I wanted to thank our teachers, administrators, and district staff for all your hard work and the agility to work through these issues on such short notice. I truly appreciate the parents from all of us that are involved to get our students engaged and on with our teachers. This is a difficult time for all of us. Not only are we dealing with a worldwide pandemic, our families have been quarantined for months. And now we're in this to learn together and keep our students engaged. It's not easy, but I know we're gonna get through this together. I want to give a huge shout out to our Sac City parents. You are not only the supporters, the caregivers, the cooks, and probably some of the playmates in your households. And now you are now the educators, the home educators. You deserve all that credit. I have spoken with many of you, and you're embracing it, and you're doing your absolutely best. Please know that we're all here for you. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us.
Thank you, Board Member Pritchett. Board Member Vang?
Yeah, I'll just keep this short. I actually just wanted to commend Student Member Shayk just for his raw honesty and just his advocacy on behalf of his peers, and just wanted to give him a shout out. And, you know, just really want, I definitely want to welcome all our parents, our amazing teachers and staff and principals back to school. But I know that there are some really tough realities on the ground. And, you know, something I just want to share, I know that, you know, we are heading into impasse. But, and I know that as a district, we, you know, we have incorporated what we've heard this summer from our parents. And while we may think we have a great plan, I think I just also want to say that we can have a great plan, but implementation will be hard if not everyone is on the same page, right? And that is the reality of where we're at right now. And, you know, I'm urging, you know, my colleagues, labor partners, we got it. We gotta get together. We gotta get through this because our students can't afford another day. I mean, our parents are still trying to figure out what's gonna happen next week. And we, all of us need to step up. So I just, you know, I want to make that plea, holding myself accountable, my colleagues, our labor partners. I think we all want what is best for our students. I think we all just have a different path of getting there, but we have to work together and do this because our students and our families are counting on us. So, welcome back, everyone.
Thank you, Board Member Vang. Any other board member comments? Looks like we have none tonight. Moving on to item ten, sorry, item eleven point oh, the Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. This is our last substantive item of the evening. Eleven point one, Proposed School Site Renaming Process for Sutter Middle School, Kit Carson International Academy, and Peter Burnett. I know that the families who have hung in there with us at almost eleven o'clock at night have been following this issue. There is obviously grave concern with names that have, you know, real racial implications. And so there's been a request that we reconsider some of the names of our school sites. There is a committee that is working to look at changing the names of a handful of schools, and this is an informational update on that work.
Thank you. Hello, President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, members of the board. I'm Nathaniel Browning in the Facilities Department here in the district, and I'm here to present the district's proposed school site renaming process for Sutter, Kit Carson, and Peter Burnett. These three names are found to be the most egregious school site names within the district in terms of representing racism, oppression, and exclusion of others. It is important to address these names and others in the future since school names should portray the values of the district and surrounding community. Next slide. The naming process is closely linked to the district's core value and guiding principle. Every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it gets, and this is very true in the shadow of our previous capital suspensions report. The fact is that these three names are named after absolutely despicable individuals. Peter Burnett created some of the West's first exclusionary laws aimed towards Black and Chinese Americans, and all three individuals brutally murdered, tried to annihilate, imprisoned, and enslaved Indigenous peoples. Kit Carson, Peter Burnett, and John Sutter all led widely documented extermination campaigns. This should not be tolerated. Next slide. This process is most definitely tied to dismantling racism within our system and within the broader community. California Education Code Section two-two-one-point-two states the legislature finds and declares all of the following, among other items. A, the use of racially derogatory or discriminatory school or athletic team names, mascots, or nicknames in California public schools is antithetical to the California school mission of providing an equal education to all. The intent of this law is to dismantle and remove any derogatory or discriminatory school names. And D, no individual or school has an interest in retaining a racially derogatory or discriminatory school or athletic team name, mascot, or nickname. Additionally, the district has Board Policy seven-three-one-zero that outlines the process for renaming sites to include the appointment of a Citizens Advisory Committee to review name suggestions and submit those recommendations to the board for the board's consideration. There are more than three sites within the district that may qualify for a name change. However, we are focused on these three sites to begin with because of the extremely egregious nature of those individuals. We want to allow the community to appropriately process and develop appropriate recommendations for the board and the staff to provide the proper supports for this process to effectively take place without crowding out the importance of these names or the importance of the process. Next slide. Here is the proposed process to develop a recommendation for the board. We have a good understanding of the costs associated with renaming the sites, and will review those costs with the Sacramento County Office of Education, considering their oversight role within the district at this time. Staff recommends the creation of a Citizens Advisory Committee of no more than twenty-six individuals to develop, review, and recommend name changes of these three sites to the board. We recommend the committee consists of the following. Four district staff to include one instructional assistant superintendent, one communications department member, and two facilities department members. Three principals, one from each site. Seven community members or parents appointed by the board. Three students appointed by the student board member in partnership with the Student Advisory Council. Three community members or parents appointed by the superintendent. Three principal selections, one from each site. And three youth development selections that represent our community. We will come back to the board on October first to receive board member and superintendent appointments, as well as share the names of other participants who will serve on the advisory committee. Afterwards, we will develop and share a community announcement about this effort. That announcement will also include a survey link to gather community-at-large feedback on potential name changes. Next slide. The next three signs illustrate places on the three campuses that carry the names of individuals in question. The pictures illustrate both the displays of the oppressive names, but also elements we must consider into the costs of renaming each site. Here are a couple examples of signs and markings that would have to be changed at Kit Carson. It is fairly minimal with just a couple signs and a few banners. However, the gym floor itself would cost about fifty thousand dollars to refinish. It could be less to refinish the gym floor if we wanted to sand and re-stain only the small sections where the names and mascots are located, but it would definitely look like a patched job. Next slide. Sutter Middle has the largest amount of signage. They also have gym uniforms, athletic jerseys, and more. This would be the most expensive site to address because of the additional costs of the uniforms. I do want to note that costs may be notably less depending on the name that may be chosen. For example, if Sutter was renamed to Sacramento Middle School, then many of the S depictions on the campus would remain, thus lowering the cost. You see the upper right corner of this slide, there's many depictions of that S. Next slide. Lastly, Peter Burnett is the least expensive to address, as would be the case with most elementary sites in the district. Next slide. As the previous pictures outline, there are a number of items that would need to be addressed. As such, here is an outline of costs associated with renaming each site. Kit Carson would be about sixty-five thousand dollars. Sutter at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for purposes that I explained. And Peter Burnett would be more minimal at ten thousand dollars. Next slide. The next steps would be to begin gathering recommendations needed to create the advisory committee and come back to the board in October. Afterwards, we would outline a series of meetings between October and mid-January in order to come back to the board at the February fourth, twenty-twenty-one board meeting to present the committee recommendations to the board for their consideration. Next slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathaniel. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have four public comments.
Thank you, Anne.
And the first was submitted by Cindy Lamar. And it says, "The last time we provided this letter of support, we only had four hours to do so. This time, we had a day and a half to reach out to the red and brown communities and those agencies serving the most marginalized among us. As you can see, there is no doubt you have support of many to move ahead in a positive manner and serve as a model to other districts who may be considering or grappling with similar issues. We thank you for your swift action and look forward to the changes needed for our Native children to feel a part of the SUSD community. We are thankful to Emily Mizakami for helping to begin this process. I can act as the lead for this letter, but have attached emails to each name, tribe, and organization. Thank you again, Cindy Lamar." And so attached was an updated letter in support of changing school names in the SUSD. And it says, "We, the undersigned, request a review of schools in the Sacramento City Unified School District named inappropriately after individuals who have caused irreparable harm to Indigenous populations, most rigorously John Sutter and Peter Burnett. We understand times change and people become more aware of the background and history of names. A thorough review of these schools will help bring about a better education for all students and recommend a committee be formed to help with this task. It is important as board members to ensure racial equality is foremost on your agenda, and thank you for your attention to this matter, especially during this time when an effort to address racial disparity within our communities and public schools is so important." And then there are names listed from, but it looks like we are out of time to read them all. So. The next public comment is from Emily Mizakami and says, "Thank you, board members and facility staff, for your swift response to the community's clear desire to review the names of some of our wonderful schools. Despite budget concerns and a worldwide pandemic, you are taking action to put a stop to systemic racism and the honoring of abhorrent men of the past who mistreated and abused people of color. Keep up the good work and stay on track so we can see new names for Sutter, Kit Carson, and Peter Burnett in twenty-twenty-one." And the next comment is from Haley Burrows and says, "I support the renaming of Sutter Middle School in addition to other schools in our district. The name displayed and utilized by our schools needs to represent our community values, and this change represents steps in the right direction." And then the last comment is from June Robbins and says, "I support the renaming of Sutter Middle School, Kit Carson, and Peter Burnett Elementary School. As a former student of Sutter Middle School, I applaud the steps the district is taking towards dismantling systemic racism in Sacramento by changing the names of these schools." And that's the last comment.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Nathaniel. Just a very quick practical question, and then we'll take board member comments and questions. I think clearly this is long overdue and promotes an anti-racist agenda and the dismantling of oppressive systems that we've been talking about. I would like to know, you know, we just passed one of the largest school board bonds in the history of Sac City Unified School District. Are we able to use bond dollars for the upgrades that were talked about to the marquees and other signage associated with the school's names?
Yes, so I also invite Ms. Rose Ramos in to jump in as well. But we do have a couple different funding options to help with this effort, including bond dollars as well as routine restricted maintenance funds as well.
Given the district's financial challenges, that's huge in being able to expedite this work. Thank you. Board Member Minnick, Board Member Garcia, Board Member Pritchett.
Well, thanks. I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Browning, for putting together the details that you did. I've heard from a lot of folks on this over, you know, multiple years, specifically around Peter Burnett in the area I represent. And I think, yes, it's absolutely overdue. Um, but I also want people to be aware that there does need to be a process and that there is a cost associated. I've had a lot of conversations with folks um, to, you know, help folks understand that, yeah, th- this is important, but it's not like we can, you know, one day say, "All right, we're gonna start calling it, uh, you know, a Hambur Boulevard School," or whatever. Um, because there's a lot of things with the, with the name on it. And, and I really appreciate you breaking down kind of the specifics and how different it is between schools. Um, I am a little curious, and you don't have to have an answer for this now, but like, you know, I think, you know, at some of the, um, you know, at some schools, there a lot of the, the um, signage, uniforms, and stuff uh were things that have been um, uh, fundraised for through uh PTAs and stuff, um, where other schools, that's not necessarily the case. So um, I don't know if, uh, we can't really hold a, a school responsible um, just because of the way that they had initially purchased some of this stuff. But um, I'm just thinking kind of out loud about the, the other, other ways that we can kind of support some of this, uh, some of the changes, uh, knowing that, you know, some uh, some uh, groups at schools might feel uh, they have the ability to kind of offset some, some costs and stuff, too. Um, but I really appreciate knowing, you know, the, things like the, the floor uh, and how expensive that is. And, you know, I just thought that was something where we could just repaint it, but I guess it's not really that, that easy. So, um, thanks. And uh, and could you just clarify again? You said one of the um, elements was to have appointed uh, members to this committee, appointed by board members, is that correct? And was that one per board member? Was that? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, that is one per board member, um, with the exception of the student board member in partnership with the Student Advisory Council.
Right. Gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
Uh, Board Member Garcia, and then Board Member Pritchett, and then Board Member Morowski?
Um, yeah, thank you. So um, so yes, I, I want to thank staff for, and Superintendent for moving um, quickly on this. Um, I'm looking forward to starting the process. I did have the question about the funding source. Um, so I'm glad to hear that bond dollars are available to um, offset some of these um expenditures um, related to changing the name of these um, schools. Um, but one, I, I also had the question about um, PE clothing. I mean, at Sutter, they have multiple teams um, for any given sport. So I'm, I'm just, I'm actually concerned that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not going to be enough. Um, it's, it's a, it's a middle school that's highly branded. Um, and then I think the same could be said for maybe Kit Carson, even Peter Burnett. I mean, it can come down to, to paper, right? Um, so, so I'm just, I'm just trying to really get a sense of um, the actual expenditures and what it all covers. Because I do see, with the exception of PE clothing, that many of this is mostly um, facilities-related. Uh, so I, I want to know what other types of changes need to be made outside of these um, of this sort of um, category or area. And then um, and then don't know if um, principals were consulted um, in terms of trying to get some feedback as to what um, what would need to, what changes um, need to be made at, at um, each school site. Um, again, from business cards to paper to signage to PE clothes and whatnot. And then I'm obviously concerned that as PTAs and PTOs um, in many schools are um, are, have often, um, I think, become the um, the, the group and through fundraising efforts to really provide some of these um, equipment and PE clothing and whatnot, um, what that means for um, these organizations, right? Um, so trying to figure out where that delicate balance is um, between um, making sure that we have a real sense of what, what the overall impact is, what different funding sources are available, and what will um, be covered. Um, and I, I, I just don't know, for example, what a school site would do if they need to update paper, does that come out of their own school site budget? Um, so it's a lot of those um, questions. Um, and then uh, the overall sort of number of participants, are these um, are these generally, uh, I guess these advisory committees generally this large? Um, it just seems unusually large. I don't know if it's because it's three school sites that we're talking about, and it's trying to balance the, um, ensure that there's um, a, a diverse voice from each community, which I, I understand. So it just, it just sort of stood out to me. So I'm just not sure if this is sort of common practice when, when you're tackling three school sites at once.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so the cost breakdown. Um, Peter Burnett and Kit Carson do not have the same needs for jerseys or, or gym clothes that Sutter does have. Um, in working with our district auditor, the budget team, and then also um, the front office staff at Sutter, the, we found out that purchasing new athletic jerseys for all of the teams is about forty thousand dollars. So that is included in that hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure. Um, some of the figures um, for uh, the large mural, for example, at Sutter, it's a very simplistic mural, but very beautiful and, and I would believe cherished mural nonetheless. That's about fifteen thousand dollars to replace. Uh, that's also included in um, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure as well. Um, principals at those three sites were not specifically um, just uh, connected with and discussed on what the costs were. However, uh, working with the budget department, uh, the district auditor, and looking at when we renamed Leah Tata Floyd um, back in two thousand and twelve, and then looking at current costs and what was in the escape and the replacement of things like jerseys and such is where we pulled all of the numbers with the number of people. The letterhead, um, there are, of course, letterhead and paper will have to be uh, exchanged out, but those costs are, are, come up every single year. So it's not going to be much more above and beyond the typical annual costs for paper goods like that. That's, there is a, a padding in there for redesigning graphics and such like that as well. And if there's any type of uh, existing folders or binders that would need to be replaced, there's a pad within that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, if we were to continue to talk about Sutter.
And that would include websites as well and all that, um, part of that one-time annual, I guess, allocation?
Yeah, so we have a, a district webmaster that works on all of the websites. And so when we're looking at um, a graphic design for a school, that graphic design would then be used on the website as well.
Okay. Well, thank you. And again, um, I, I want to thank you for the, the speed in, in, in bringing this um, to the board and look forward to starting this um, I think um, uh, process that's long overdue. So, thank you.
Board Member Pritchett, and then Board Member Morowski?
Thank you, President Ryan. Uh, Member Garcia asked some of my questions. I am curious, you know, from um, you know, being a, a football um, parent and cheer parent for, you know, many years while my kids were young. Uh, I can tell you that, you know, I, as a parent, would have to purchase their uniforms. So I was curious if there will be an analysis that's done to find out with said Sutter, for example, um, if, you know, if the parents are supposed to repurchase uniforms, or would the school um, in the school district be responsible for those costs? And I'm glad, Member Garcia, asked a question about um, like, letterhead and stuff, I would, and, and websites. I was curious about that because I remember when we renamed Washington, um, there was a great cost, and that's an elementary school, and it was a big, it was a big cost um, to, for the renaming of a school. So I hope that there's a deep analysis, and when we do these meetings with our community members, that we have the complete analysis of all of the costs combined.
Thank you. Remember Morowski?
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm really excited to see this. I really appreciate you bringing this forward and being so responsive. Um, I uh, I have to admit, I didn't grow up in California. I'm not uh, super, super knowledgeable about California history the way I really should be. I, I know a little bit about um, uh, about the folks that we're talking about. Um, I, I do want to make sure, kind of, just because, partially because of my own ignorance, that when we're, when we're taking major steps like renaming, that we are doing it in a very thoughtful way, that um, you know, that there are, I don't know, I, I feel like I'm uh, missing, missing a little bit of um, information, like maybe a board resolution that would make findings about, like, why we're changing the names or something like that. I'm not sure what quite the process is um, for doing this, because it's the first time I've heard it. I certainly support uh, one hundred percent um, the way to do it. And a little bit uh, unclear about, you know, kind of how this, how this complies with the board policy in terms of uh, changing the name should only occur under extraordinary circumstances and after thorough study. And I just want to make sure that the thorough study, whatever that is, has been done. Um, and that maybe there's some memorialization of, of what the findings are. And um, yeah, and I would, I, I'm sure this will be discussed, but I would be really um, really excited to support a, a name change that recognized uh, the Native heritage of, of our geography. And um, I'm not sure if that is compliant with the current policy, so maybe we can look at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Morowski. Do we have any other Board Member comments or questions? Looks like we're done on this item. Um, thank you, Nathaniel, for your efforts. Um, I would love when we continue this conversation after you've consulted with CSBA and others, if you can gain some best practices that help us establish the parameters for the committee and the process that we'll undergo. Um, would love to dig into that.
Excellent. Thank you.
So with that, it looks like we um, are moving on to our last item, um, the consent agenda. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Student preferential vote?
Yes, on all open session items.
Okay, and this is a roll call vote. Please call roll.
Member Ryan?
Yes.
Member Minnick?
Yes.
Member Pritchett?
Yes.
Member Wu?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Um, aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Item thirteen point O, Future Board Meetings Dates and Locations.
Excuse me, President Ryan, we do have one public comment on item twelve point one C from Nikki Malefsky.
Okay, thank you.
And her comment says, "This is really misleading for the public and for the school board. Earlier tonight, you had a public presentation of the proposed COVID spending plan, but back hidden in the consent agenda that is not discussed publicly, you have eight point six million in actual COVID money expenditures as of August twenty-five, twenty-twenty, for this board to approve tonight. Those expenditures include a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to the law firm of Lozano Smith for COVID-related legal slash negotiation fees from March to June, and ninety-three thousand dollars to Pam Man- Manweller for consultant slash negotiations during the same time period, with no discussion of that outrageous expense at all. Is this really what these dollars should be spent on?" That's the only comment.
Thank you, Anne. Item thirteen point O is Board Meeting Locations and Dates. Our next board meeting will be on September seventeenth. With that, we're going to adjourn back into closed session.